And the place looks really nice, too. The bathrooms are very cool. We had, we were told we had to go in and see the bathrooms. And we weren't, uh, we weren't disappointed.
Yeah, those photos are going to compete with the food, I think. The food photos. That was fun. I had a lot of COVID time to go through wallpaper samples.
Yeah.
Seriously, that's what I did. Oh, my.
It's better than watching Netflix on repeat and counting the, counting the days.
Yep.
But no, you made the right choice. And I was, I was able to, um, somebody there let me poke my head upstairs and look at the, uh,
Mm hmm.
The reception area. Very nice, too. I like the chandeliers and that must have been quite a project to clean that up.
Yeah. But it's good now. You know, we're, except for COVID, we're, we're ready.
Yeah.
Okay, it looks like it's seven o'clock and everyone seems to be here. So I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors for August 3rd, 2020. And I'll ask Dave to do the introduction.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, everybody, for joining us this evening for the August 3rd regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. This meeting's been advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a virtual meeting that will be held using the Zoom telemeeting platform. If you're joining a Zoom meeting tonight as a member of the public or as an agent to speak on behalf of an agenda item, I just ask that you enter your name and municipality of residence and applicable, the topic that you wish to speak on by using the chat feature at the bottom part of your screen just below the word bubble. Um, in addition to the, um, virtual meeting space, the township's teleconference line may be accessed by calling township's main line at eight one four two three eight four six five one and dialing extension three seven nine nine when prompted. Prior to beginning the meeting, I have a few short logistical items to cover. First, anybody viewing at home can interact with the board by unmuting your microphone when acknowledged by the chairperson. Um, I asked that if you're, if you're not speaking, if you please mute your microphone to reduce any ambient background noise, I'd appreciate it. Uh, please refrain from using the chat feature to either ask questions or offer comments since nobody monitors the chat and your comment or question may go unnoticed. Um, secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name when motion or seconding a motion so that the minutes can accurately reflect the action taken. And then just last, they all conduct a roll call to board to ensure that all members can hear and interact by using the Zoom platform. So please indicate that you're here when your name is called. Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Nini?
Here.
Mr. Mitra?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a quorum.
Okay, so, uh, and I would ask anyone that wants to get my attention, if you're on video, give a wave if, uh, not, there's the reaction button at the bottom, you can do the hand there and, uh, I'll notice you then and call on you. Um, first item on the agenda is citizens input for anything that is not on the agenda, if anyone cares to address the board. Uh, seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. We have minutes from the July 20th, 2020 regular meeting, July 21st Capital Improvement Program Special Meeting and July 22nd Capital Improvement Program Special Meeting. Very motion to approve.
Can we do these as a group?
Yes.
Okay, I move to approve the minutes listed.
Addy seconds?
Okay, is there any changes or questions about the minutes of attached to the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye, aye.
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 Opposed, say. Seeing none, motion carries. And we'll move on to special reports. Uh, this is the, we'll start with the COVID-19 report from the Township Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My report this evening is very brief. I think much of the developments that have taken place over the last week will be discussed later in the agenda, so I'll just kind of gloss over those. Um, last week, the township issued our business needs survey to any commercial fire and home occupation permit holder in the township. Idea being that we would capture, um, just about all of the businesses that are operating within our municipality by using that listserv. Uh, we hope to get an understanding of the opportunities for improved cooperation with our business community for future recovery efforts or in the event of a potential resurgence of the pandemic in the fall. We will share the results publicly once, uh, they are available. Regionally, the Center Region Municipal Managers, the Cog Executive Director and the Center Region Emergency Management Coordinator have been meeting regularly and we've been discussing the enactment of municipal ordinances, uh, to either require masking or social distancing in public spaces. Per the Department of Health's guidance, municipalities can promulgate additional regulations to enforce safety measures in response to the pandemic. State College Borough has a draft of an ordinance that's moving forward in the review process and I presume there will be some discussion later this evening, uh, whether Ferguson Township ought to follow suit. Um, I believe there is some value in regional consistency with these regulations, um, primarily for ease of interpretation and for enforcement purposes as well. That's all I had to report. Um, just want to say thanks on behalf of myself and staff for everybody's patience and understanding as we move through this crisis. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board or those attending at home may have.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Uh, it's like Lisa has a question.
Thanks, Dave. Um, and like you said, we'll probably get into a lot of the detail and different things later, but I just wanted to, um, dig in a little bit into, um, one aspect of this and I tried to work this out a little bit following the general forum meeting because after the update from Sean Kaufman, I still left with the question of how exactly are additional restrictions imposed on the county now that the governor said he won't change counties by color status any longer. And so, um, I talked a little with Dave, I talked a little with Sean Kaufman, just trying to lay that out and I, I think it, um, deserves a little bit of time just so that people understand what exactly the process is. I know it's, um, not clear to a lot of people. So from my understanding, the county commissioners would need to seek additional restrictions from the governor's office. And that's because we don't have a county.
That would be one avenue, yes.
Okay, so that's, and are you, another avenue, would that be the ordinance that we're talking about? Is that okay?
Yeah, I think alternatively, we would do what we can. I mean, uh, of course, the center, you know, center county has municipalities well beyond the center regions reach. So I can't necessarily speak for them, but you know, at the request of the county commissioners, um, or the county administrator, Margaret Gray, we, we're, and we're still kind of massaging some of the details on how that, um, you know, interaction would take place or how that would request would go through the channels. Uh, and I think, you know, thanks to you bringing it up, that gave Sean some additional, um, clarity on, on maybe where we have opportunities to improve that. But I, I would, you know, the, the way that it's materializing would be that the commissioners or the county administrator would work with the Center Region Emergency Management Council to, um, you know, promote or an, and the enactment of some of these more restrictive ordinances because the county doesn't have police power to that end. So they would, you know, really struggle with enforcement. I know there's some legislation that's, uh, currently making its way through the General Assembly and to, to the governor's office for, that would enable, excuse me, um, health departments, health officers to, um, be, uh, to, to conduct enforcement. Um, the county does not have a certified, uh, Board of Health. So, you know, we contract with State College Borough for that. So that might be another opportunity for enforcement um, and some of those regulations to, to come down, but that's still developing as of this morning. So not quite, not quite settled yet.
Okay, so would that include things that we can do in an ordinance? And we can get into this later, but just, um, so that I understand for this part of the discussion, uh, capacity at, um, restaurants or in stores or gathering sizes? Is that something that we can do by ordinance or is that something that has to go through the county as well?
No, I think we could. We, I mean, it's, it's fairly open-ended, all of the, um, guidance that we've received from the Department of Health, um, in terms of what municipalities are allowed to enact or, or be more restrictive of. So the interpretation that, you know, we're all moving ahead with is that we, we have a great deal of autonomy when it comes to implementing, you know, more restrictive regulations or standards than what has come down from even the governor's office or the Department of Health.
Okay. And then I would just wonder, I guess, why the borough wouldn't seek additional restrictions. And again, we can go into this and we talk about it later in the ordinance, but what I had asked Sean and Dave earlier this week was if the county commissioners were seeking to impose greater restrictions in the near future. And the answer was no, as far as I understood it. And I had also asked if they could seek restrictions, um, just on the center region, so just a portion of the county, um, and over a temporary basis. So say, yeah, at the beginning of Penn State move in to the dorms and apartments through possibly, you know, two weeks after classes have been begun, began something like that. And so I didn't hear about that, if that was, um, something that, that the county commissioners would be able to seek, but what you've described clarifies a little bit more on what the municipal, um, municipal reach could be. So we can, we can talk about that more, but that's kind of the, the nature of the discussion that I was having with Sean earlier this week. So I just wanted to clarify where that was. More later.
As far as the, the limitations on what the commissioners would be permitted to petition the governor's office for whether they could ask for specific restrictions that apply to just a certain geographic area within the county or whether they would be asking the governor's office for, um, you know, to impose county-wide regulations. I'm probably out of my wheelhouse a little bit if I try to take a guess at that. I mean, my, my thought would be, or my opinion would be that it would be a county-wide, if, if it's coming from the state to the county, that it's going to be a county-wide regulation. If it's something that's regional specific, like region-specific or municipality-specific, the more appropriate, um, you know, avenue for, for those regulations to be put into place would be through local ordinance.
Okay, thanks so much. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Laura.
Thanks, Steve. Um, is it correct that all municipalities can enact ordinance like that or do you have to be a home rule municipality to do so?
There's, there's no restrictions on the class of municipality that I've found, um, that are enabled to enact additional regulations. I would, you know, depending on, I mean, obviously this is a fluid issue and I don't think some of this has been, you know, kind of worked its way through any potential challenges or anything yet, or as far as it may, or presumably the pandemic will be over by the time it does, but, um, you know, I would, I would think that as a home rule municipality, we have probably more, uh, leeway to act than maybe some other classes do, but there's been no, um, and in all the legislation that I've seen and all the guidance and directives that have come down from the Department of Health, there's been nothing or no mention of class of municipality and what is and is not permitted to be done within those classes. So are, my understanding of it is that it's applicable to all, um, political subdivisions across the Commonwealth.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Dave?
You're muted, Steve.
There we go. I got it. And we'll move on now to the next report, uh, which is disclosed Center Region Library Report. As Lou Steinberg is here to update us on the library.
Thank you, uh, Stephen, members of Board Supervisor School Library. I'll start with the financial situation. And I'm not sure whether I previously discussed with you the fact that the library was applying for a loan through the PPP program, uh, part of the federal, uh, COVID-19 assistance, uh, uh, act, uh, however it did. And in fact, we received, we, the library received a $341,000, uh, correct, well, uh, 300, in fact, received $341,000. I'll stop myself because I'll explain, uh, that initially it is set up as if it were to be a loan, but if the money is used for payroll, it, it, the, the amount, the loan is forgiven. So in essence, it becomes a grant. It is the intent of the library to use 100% of this money, uh, for payroll purposes and therefore effectively this is a grant of $341,000 that the library has received. Um, the, uh, as a result of this, as of June 30th of this year, which is the last date we have or I have for financial information, the, the library is in sound financial shape. Uh, it has received 100% of the money that it was allocated to receive from the state. And fortunately, it received that early in the year before COVID-19 hit. And so we've got the state's money in hand. No one knows what it'll do to the 2021, uh, budget, but for 2020, we have it. As far as the county and the local, um, money, we have received 50%, which is what we should have received from both the, um, uh, local governments as well as the county. And so, um, the bottom line is that as of June 30th, the School Library had received revenues equally approximately two-thirds of its annual budget amount. And with the anticipated, uh, receipt of the revenues from the county and the municipalities, uh, it should definitely end 2020 in the black. With regard to, uh, expenditures, and I should have addressed that before saying what the conclusion would be, but with regard to expenditures, as of June 30th, we're right on budget, uh, 48% of the, uh, annual budget had been expended at 50% of the year. As far as capital expenditures go, the library has made the decision, the Board, uh, the Board of Trustees has made a decision to defer any, uh, capital expenditures that might be just, uh, at all discretionary. The biggest expenditure that will be made will be to replace external doors that have basically worn out over the 15 years life of them. Uh, as far as circulation, you, obviously, nobody would be surprised that circulation is down since the library was closed for an extended period of time, as we all know. Uh, so as far as book circulation, uh, which down approximately 35%. However, also not surprising, e-audiobooks are up 25% and ebooks are up 45%. Uh, since the county went green, uh, the, uh, library has been, uh, having doorside pickup, which is going quite successfully. And that will help the circulation, the numbers going forward. Unfortunately, I have to report that the library will not be opening the doors for people to be able to browse through the stock, uh, the, the stacks in the foreseeable future. Given the size of the library, given, uh, the amount of, uh, stats, the stacks that we have, it just doesn't appear to, uh, management of the library that it would be consistent with the best, uh, social distancing rules to do so. As an aside, I would add that, uh, this Center County Library, as of today, I think, did open up, but they're dealing with a much smaller space, smaller number of, uh, books and they're able to control their situation more. As far as, uh, news, uh, the library has worked, entered into an agreement with the State College Area School District, uh, effectively immediately that will give access to all of the library's online virtual library, uh, to all the students of State College Area, uh, School District through their student ID cards. So that should be, uh, an assistance to the students and, uh, giving them an additional brief valuable resources, uh, for their, uh, education. Another new item, uh, is, and I just learned this today, it disclosed, uh, library has just received a $10,000 Pennsylvania Humanitarian Council Grant, which is for, uh, specifically dedicated for fall virtual programs, which of course is critical since that's where so much of what the library does now will be. And this $10,000 will be allocated to cover some, uh, personnel costs with regard to the, uh, virtual programs as well as program expenses itself. Uh, so that is my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone would have of me with regards to the status of the library.
Thanks, Lou. Are there any questions on the library report?
Lisa? Not a question, but I just wanted to comment on the, the door side pickup service. That's great. And so I, um, just wanted to comment that I appreciate that that's up and running and, um, hope that can continue for a while.
Well, thank you. I am confident that it will continue as long, as long as we're both able to do it and until people will be able to have access to the, uh, to the building itself. We have, uh, I appreciate, and I will pass on your words to, uh, management because they'll be happy to hear, uh, your thoughts, but I can also share that we've had many positive, uh, responses and comments. In fact, there have been people who have actually donated to the library specifically noting that they're doing so because their appreciation of this service being offered.
Any, any other questions or comments? I don't see any others. Thank you very much, Lou. Thanks for serving on the board.
Steve, I just make one final personal comment in that this will be the last report that I will give as a, uh, as a member of the Board of Trustees. As Sue Werner will give one later in the year, but I certainly appreciated the opportunity to, uh, represent Ferguson Township on the Board of Trustees. And, uh, it's been a very interesting and informative experience. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, next, communications report, sentries. Martin will be doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Uh, if you don't mind, Dave, I'm going to share the screen and just, um, share a little, a brief presentation that I prepared to complement my presentation this evening.
Yep.
All right. Can you see it? Is it centered? Okay, great. Uh, well, thank you for the opportunity to provide an update, uh, with the Township's Communications and Community Engagement Report. My last presentation was in July 2019. So please know this presentation will cover most of the highlights within the last 12 months. First and foremost, a lot of the efforts, you know, of, of mine and Nick Figaro, our communications coordinator, have really been channeled to the Crisis Communications Team. When the manager activated the Township's Continuity of Operations Plan, he also mobilized the Crisis Communications Team to convene with me as chair. This team convened for the first time in March and with a drafted Township Crisis Communications Plan as a reference, um, this COVID-19 pandemic, however, has stretched this plan to the limit, forcing our team to get creative with our communications to the public because this current crisis communications, uh, plan that we have written, um, tends to be more effective for other types of natural disasters. So resources like ICMA, 3CMA, the, um, City County Communications and Marketing Association, um, have offered guidance through several webinars, articles, uh, et cetera, that, um, Nick and I have taken advantage of to share with our team. So there's been a, a great deal of collaboration between the Public Information Officers, Amy Farkas, Harris Township Manager, as well as Douglas Shont, the assistant to the manager at the Borough of State College. Um, just a few updates here. As you can see on the screen, um, some of the bigger initiatives that we've been doing, collaborating to get out at the beginning of COVID-19, uh, resident mailer went out to residents, uh, from the manager and with an invitation to subscribe, we have 238 subscribed COVID weekly update email recipients. And most recently is the Township Business Survey that the manager spoke of in his report. Um, so transitioning, just to give a few highlights and communications, um, I don't know if, uh, you had a chance before COVID-19 hit, but Nick Figaro, he started with the Township in November 2019. He provided, uh, this unique creative, um, visual, I think it's called an infrographic. Um, so it's a great tool to kind of give this snapshot of what all of our social media accounts as far as followers and likes, uh, look like. So, uh, provided on this screen, you can see that on the far right. On the far left gives you a snapshot of, you know, the statistics for each of our social media accounts. Um, from up until today, or, excuse me, not today, July 31st, 2020. Um, and then in the middle here, you see the statistics for July 31st, 2019. I'm going to keep going and if you have questions, feel free to stop me or we can save them for the end, whatever. A few other highlights here, you know, I'm not getting into the weeds, but just giving you a visual presentation with some of the updates on the far left here, August to December 2019, a lot of the, um, initiatives, as you might remember, for those of you who are new, I'm happy to elaborate if you have questions. Uh, the township, um, worked to, when we engage National Research Center to distribute what we called the National Citizen Survey to serve in place, um, or to serve in place of the 2011 community survey, uh, that was done prior to the National Citizen Survey being done in 2019. There was a sample size of, I believe, 1,700 residents that received this and we had approximately 450 response. Um, and there's a great deal of information provided in the National Citizen Survey. So please, uh, be encouraged to, uh, visit that. It serves as a resource for staff and I, um, I'd like to believe residents as well. Um, also a reminder, the website redesign launch was done in September. We launched the redesign, um, middle of September. Um, there was the communications coordinator position that was vacant for about six weeks. Um, so we, you know, we had, we had a little bit of a delay with some of the activity that we had going on, um, within, with on, in regards to our social media accounts. We did maintain and update the website regularly, but the social media accounts were paused for a period of time. Also with the support from you all, uh, we did move forward with the internship program and we had an intern, uh, serve in the position for the fall semester. We, moving over into January 2020, I have COVID-19 coronavirus communications, a new initiative that, um, has really, um, it's been a new creative idea proposed by the Tree Commission as the podcast pilot program. There was a lot of time and energy spent to prepare a strategic plan to move that forward. However, with COVID-19 and all of the other, um, resources here within the township being stretched thin, this is something that while it's planned to still move forward, it hasn't been launched as of now. Um, again, the internship program, there were efforts made before COVID-19, which included attending, uh, a few career fairs with a lot of responses and interaction following, uh, our attendance at the Lock Haven University Career Fair and the Penn State University Career Fair. Uh, but I, I believe those career fairs were in February and COVID-19 hit us hard in March. So, um, again, I don't want to go into too many details here, but as you all were, Stormwater User Fee Program Public Meeting, we've assisted with facilitating that. Uh, something that we're doing here on the backend that will hopefully be presented in the near future is a review of the social media policy. Um, and, uh, there's been a lot of collaboration in campaign, uh, social media posts in regards to the 2020 census. So if there are any questions with that, otherwise I'll just move on. Here's a real quick snapshot of some of the regular ongoing communications and engagement that we continue to, to do. Um, we held coffee and conversations in July. However, we did have to cancel it due to COVID-19 in April. The homeowners' open associations will, will hold that most likely online, but that decision is yet to be determined in the fall, but we did have to cancel the one in April. Oh, excuse me. Um, again, there have been some other initiatives, you know, Nick Figaro has done a review of, well, I guess I'll call it an inventory of all of our communications and engagement. He's done a really nice job of putting that together and trying to determine where best we might be able to do some updates. And he's currently collaborating with the planning department to update some of their brochures that will be available, um, in digital and as well as print. So those are some of the other things that we're doing regarding, uh, print, digital and social media. And then there's a list there of campaigns and something that I've, uh, been discussing. discussing that I'd like to eventually put forward as a strategic communications plan. So more to come on that. Yeah. With that shared, thank you for the opportunity to kind of give you a highlight and go back and do a quick review of things that we've done, things that we're doing and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
If anyone has any questions, just speak up. I can't see everyone right now. We have screen sharing, so. Just. Okay, not hearing any. Thank you, sent Reese. Sounds like you got plenty of work lined up here, so. Next item on the agenda is the under unfinished business, the final land development plan for Thistlewood Lot 19.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Jenna to introduce this. Okay, here she is. Sorry.
I'm hiding.
Find you right now.
Provided the agenda is a copy of the final land development plan submitted by Pentair Engineering on behalf of their client, Eric Reischer. Plan proposes the construction approximately 3,925 square feet on Lot 19 within the Thistlewood Development. The parcel is 1.8 acres and is zoned rural residential as per the Thistlewood subdivision plan. Certain lots are required to complete land development plan because of the topography, conservation easements, soil types and potential sinkhole development in this location. Lot 19 is situated in an area where sinkhole development, flooding and drainage problems may arise. Therefore, an indemnity or hold harmless agreement must be submitted along with the plan. Due to severe slope on this property, a modification waiver request was submitted and the board granted the relief of the select erosion and grading controls to allow for construction of the home at your July 20th meeting. The Planning Commission reviewed this plan at their July 27th regular meeting and recommended that the board approve the final land development plan for Thistlewood Lot 19. Included with the agenda is a memorandum dated July 28th from myself summarizing Planning Commission's comments and outstanding staff comments. And then there's another memo dated July 31st from Christina Anixing, Community Planner, outlining some outstanding comments that arose on Friday. One I will mention is the deed was updated to add the spouse of Mr. Reischer and our solicitor recommended that the, one of the conditions would be that his spouse would also sign the hold harmless agreement as well as part of the conditional approval. I believe John Sep is in here if you have questions on the plan. Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions for Jenna or for John? Okay, I don't see any. I think we had a pretty thorough discussion last meeting. We were discussing the modifications. So do we have a motion?
This is Patty. I moved that the Board of Supervisors approved the final land development plan for Thistlewood Lot 19.
This is Lisa. I'll second.
Okay, we have motion as second. Is there any discussion before we take the vote? Seeing none, all in favor? I?
I.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item is the authorization of the 2021-2025 Capital Improvement Program Budget for public hearing. I guess I'll turn that over to Dave and then Derek.
Yep. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. I'm very pleased this evening to present to the board and any public viewing at home. The draft 2021 to 2025 Capital Improvement Program Budget for Ferguson Township. Shortly, I'll turn it over to Eric Anderson, the Finance Director, to review the draft document as well as summarize the memorandum that was included with your agenda packet highlighting the proposed changes that were discussed at the July 21st and July 22nd special meetings. But before we begin, I just want to spend a few minutes talking about why the Township completes a Capital Improvement Program Budget, which is commonly referred to as the CIP, and what you might find within it. The Township's Administrative Code directs the Township Manager to submit annually a five-year Capital Improvement Program Budget, which includes at minimum the following. General summary of its contents, a list of all capital improvements which are proposed to be undertaken during the five years next ensuing, with appropriate supporting information as to the necessity for such improvements. Number three, cost estimates, method of financing and recommended time schedules for each such improvement. And number four, the estimated annual cost of operating and maintaining the facilities to be constructed or acquired. The Township has defined capital expenditures as any item that has a single cost of $2,500 or more and has an estimated useful life of over one year. Therefore, many items including office supplies, small tools, service contracts and other general expenses will not typically appear in the CIP, but will appear in the annual operating budget. Additional staffing requests have recently been added to the CIP due to the high costs associated with personnel such as salary, benefits, training and overhead. It's important to note that the CIP is only a planning document. It is not an official authorization for the Township to spend money. This document is critical in helping board members, staff and the public predict our needs as a community and avoid any unforeseen expenditures that could damage the Township's financial position. Most importantly, the document is a guidance that helps the Township continue to provide the exceptional public services that our residents have come to expect. Because this is a five-year document, the draft CIP includes over $126 million in proposed expenditures, 22 million of which are inter-fund transfers, meaning it's money transferred from the general fund to other funds such as the Transportation Improvement Fund or the Capital Reserve Fund. As you might expect, some of our largest expenditures in the CIP are road projects and equipment costs that are associated with maintaining over 90 road miles for which the Township is responsible. As was apparent throughout the special meetings, the future presents some unique challenges and as well as opportunities for the Township. Several costly capital projects such as the Park Hills Drainage Way Reconstruction, Hain Grove Mills Intersection Improvement, Suburban Park Drainage Way and Northland Area Mobility Study Improvements have been added on top of the routine maintenance and repair of public infrastructure and replacement and maintenance of equipment. As we proceed through the budget cycles in the horizon of the plan, the board will be asked to prioritize and modify the projects to reflect the reality of the Township's overall financial position. While some projects will change year to year, this document is reflective of the current priorities of the Board of Supervisors and provides a good snapshot to guide decision-making as we proceed to the development of the 2021 operating budget. I'd like to thank the Township's leadership team, particularly Eric Anderson, the Finance Director, but also Dave Modricker, Jenna Wargo, Chief Chris Albright, Centrice Martin and Angela Colkey, as well as any staff that had a hand in preparing this document. This year, facing the uncertainty, the uncertain future of the recovery and post-recovery period from the COVID-19 pandemic, staff was challenged even more so than usual to limit their requests to those items that are necessary to advance the mission and vision of the Township. I'm confident that the document you're being asked to review is consistent with the values of Ferguson Township and its residents, the Board of Supervisors and our team on staff. Most importantly, I want to thank the board for your work in reviewing the CIP as well as for your support of staff and our needs. All that said, I want to turn it over to Eric for his presentation on the 2021-2025 Capital Improvement Program Budget. Go ahead, Eric.
Thank you, sir. Let me share the screen. That's perfect. Thank you to everybody. I'd like to present the 2021 to 2025 Capital Improvement Plan and a short overview of the document. As Dave noted, this is a five-year plan, not an official budget. The one before you is in an adjusted, unadjusted version. Once the board approves the changes, it will be revised to reflect those changes. The plan uses a strategic plan for guidance. The strategic plan sets out the priorities for the capital plan. The amounts are estimates. Attempts are made to ensure the amounts are reasonably accurate. However, the actual amounts will be different because they are estimates. And some amounts are inflation adjusted. In summary, the total net spending of $126 million, net of inter-fund transfers of 22 million over the five years, that includes the, the inter-fund transfers will equal net of that, the transfers would be 104 million. The inter-fund transfers over the five-year equal 22 million as that said. Township is deficit spending all funds by $20.3 million. Revenue of 105.7 and expenditures of 126.0. Ending fund balance for all funds at the end of 2025 is minus 8.2 million. Deficit spending in the general fund is 14.7 million. Revenue of 63.1 million and expenditures of 77.8 million. The ending funding balance for the general fund is minus 7.9 million. No tax increases are included in the plan. So here's a, here's a graph of the general fund balance. As you can see in 2017, it's a 8 million. 2018 went up a little bit. In 2019, it's up again. And then it drops off according to the CIP. And the budget for 2020 actually shows a decrease as well. So the revenues over the five years, earned income taxes, 46.2 million, real estate taxes, 7.5 million, transfer taxes, 7.1, grants and contributions are 6.7. Stormwater fee fund is 9.9 and that will be offset by the same amount of money in the, in the expenditure. So it's a wash. There's no impact on the budget from the stormwater plan at this point. As talked about, the inter-fund transfers, 22.2, total of 105.7. Expenditures, existing staffing's 34.6, new staffing is 2.8. Staffing makes up roughly 30% of total cost, which is actually pretty good relative to many other places. You, in general, staffing makes up a much larger percentage of total costs in, in, in other governments. We're managing our staffing pretty well according to this. Roads and stormwater make up 23% of the total cost. The inter-fund transfers make up 18%. Other general fund costs such as vendor payments make up 9%. And a cog payments make up 8%. If you take them and add those together, you equate to 88% of total spending. There's a little chart showing that spending by year, tons, sometimes this is really skewed. It's actually pretty even this year. A lot of times you'll see 20, the last year, the CIP has a large number. It's, it's not extremely large compared to previous years. During the special meetings, the board made a few adjustments or recommended to make a few adjustments to the plan. Those are noted here in the next few slides. If we did not make the OEO full-time, we could save 239,000 plus or minus. Moving the radar trailer didn't really have any impact. Remove Williamsburg Drive, save 77,000. I haven't got a chance to determine the next item, which is a bunch of roads from 2021 to 22. It does have an impact because there's an inflation factor on, on those roads and moving them back will increase the price and moving them forward would decrease the price. So example, for Marin Drive, we moved it from 2025 to 2023 and it saved us $29,000. Add the contributions for the Lewis Sylvie Venter Memorial, because that was not included. That's a $50,000 positive. Adding the park surveying program to remaining years, so it was included in one year, but when added to the four remaining years at 10,000, that's a total of 40,000. And moving the Haymarket restroom, just moving it doesn't have an impact on the, on the cost. Changing the design of the Haymarket restroom saved $115,000. And moving through Dick Park from 2023 to 2025 has no substantial impact because those dollars are not inflation adjusted. And moving the compost facility also would have, not have a direct impact. Other recommended changes not included in the board meeting were added traffic signal upgrade at Science Park and West College Avenue to public works equipment. That's an additional 15,000. Excuse me. The board mentioned adding 3% to the EIT growth on page 22. That would increase the revenue by 1.387 million over five years and adding 1% growth to the transfer tax, same page, is an additional $346,000. I did notice a bust in a link from the park improvement grant, grant money. So that's another 612,500 to the park improvement fund. Deleting the multimodal grant and bike path construction, it's a wash. They're both 400 and some thousand, roughly 400,000. Delete the stormwater staffing and notice that was included. We're not going to do the staffing. So that's a save of 769,704. And I'm going to put in the summary of the roads by fund and type in there. Just shows you, you know, which fund is coming out of how much and whether it's ramp roads or drainage, that type of thing. Other recommended, recommended changes, Dave Modricker mentioned to move some of these from 2025 to 2023. And I don't know the cost of that directly at this point. He also updated ADA ramps, CMP relining, repair stormwater inlets and replace curb for the following years as mentioned, and we'll have to determine that cost. He did add a recycling grant for a combination brush and leaf collector plus the, the cost minus the grant is the net increase in the cost of 30,311. And there was a strenuous row on one of the, the public works sinking phone table. Didn't have any effect, but I wanted to delete that. There was an narrative added for the regional affordable housing study and a narrative for the comprehensive township-wide traffic study. And that's all I have thus far. So if you guys have any questions, I'll try to answer.
Okay, I think basically, most of the changes that Eric went through were things that were recommended or pretty much were completely agreed to by the board as we went, went through the during the works, or not work sessions, the special meetings. We did not take a, make a motion to make those changes though. I know some of the changes were things where it looks like you found something that was a minor change that didn't require or didn't change the budget very much or not at all. So I guess what we, what I would propose we do is have any discussion we need. Then there were several items that we didn't really determine whether we wanted to change. And I would then let the, or go with the discussion of those and take separate motions. But as far as the changes that Eric just covered, if we could do a motion to amend the CIP to incorporate those, I think that would be something we could do to start with and then address any of the specifics that anyone wants to discuss beyond those changes. So if that works for the board, I would take a motion to do that. Then we can have discussion if they're.
Hi Laura, move that we incorporate the changes that Eric described into the SIP.
Okay, we have, have a motion a second. Let's vote on those changes, then we'll move to any other recommendations we have. So all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Now there were some, a couple of items that we discussed and didn't really resolve in the And didn't really resolve in the, uh. Special meetings, did you want to do anything with those, Dave, or just open up to the board to?
Right, substance can open it up to the board for discussion, and then Eric and I or other department heads can respond to any questions or, or.
Okay, so if, if anyone wants to bring anything in, uh. Uh, is, um, any further modifications, this would be a time to make a, uh. Proposal, just describe the, the change that you would like to make and, uh. Then we can discuss it from there. Make a motion if the, there's a desire to change it.
Mister Chair. Um, yeah, so, uh, I had a small question, it's not relevant, but in the presentation that Eric had. Aaron Drive, where we moved it from two thousand twenty five to twenty three resulted in a decrease of the amount, so that seems a little weird. Uh, to me, can you explain, usually if it's, I mean, even if, if you look at inflation or something, then if, by bringing it earlier, it will become more, so where, where. Savings coming from by moving it earlier?
Essentially, um, say if you start today, if we built a project today, we would know the exact amount. If we were to delay that a year, I believe the inflation factor on it is five percent. So a year from now, we're estimating it's going to cost five percent more. And if you continue that for another few years, it's going to be five plus five plus five plus five. So by the time you get to twenty twenty five, it may be roughly twenty five percent higher. So by moving it less than five years, you're saving ten percent essentially. Assuming the inflation is correct.
Okay, is there any other items for discussion or? Recommendations for changes? I, I did want to note that, uh, we didn't see the, the change in the graph that, uh. Covered the, uh, earned income tax, I wanted to point out that Lisa noticed that the numbers. Didn't match between last year and this year, and we made some adjustments on that, which will make the graph look a little better.
It will.
Lisa.
Steve, um, it does make it look better, it's still, um, that's still a big number at the end, as.
Right.
Total debt, and I'm wondering if Eric calculated what now the, um. Projected, uh, total deficit and debt is in that final year.
Um, I got, I got a rough estimate, it's in the five point five million.
Okay, that's what I had too, so it's still really, um, a great change from. You know, what we've seen, I think, in the past couple of years, so what I'd mentioned to Steve is what might be helpful. Is to see actuals then, so that we have something more concrete to compare it to, because that's pretty, it's a pretty shocking increase still. Um, you know, it's gone from eight million, uh. Dollar debt to five something, but it's still, uh. Quite a bit higher, I think last year was, I don't have yet, last year's in front of me, but I think it was, it was still in the positive, so we weren't in debt by the end of the five years, so. Uh, to suddenly have a five million. Dollar hole there is still pretty significant, so. I'm still.
And that's tied to the general fund estimate, and I think last year's general fund expenditures are probably light, not, not considered. Not as accurate as they should have been. So I think that this year is probably, is probably more accurate than last year. And it is the general fund.
Wanted to see actuals, um. Can you elaborate on that a little bit, I'm, I'm not entirely certain what you're requesting?
Well, when we discussed this at the work sessions, it was, well. You know, the answer I heard, there's always a big deficit by the end of the five years, there's always a big, um, debt by the end of the five years, but I didn't see that when I went back and looked at previous years C I Ps, so. I'm wondering what can we compare this to, to have some context, um. You know, it's, we, I hear a lot of, well, that's typical, this is usual, but I'm not seeing that this is typical or usual, so. I need something else to give me some context here.
I think this is certainly an outlying year, um, some of the, or an outlying C I P rather, um, I think, to your point, I think the, the. Comparison that we were trying to make at the special meetings was that it's not uncommon for the, the downward trend. But a deficit of a negative fund balance, which we know we, we couldn't carry, we'd have to figure a way around it, you can't have a negative fund balance as a municipality. Um, we have to have a budget, a, a balanced budget. Uh, is more atypical than, you know, than normal years, than common years. A lot of these, um, projects that are in here are, you know, contingent on grant revenue receipt. Um, there are some big ticket expenditures in here that we may recommend modification of as we proceed into the operating budget. So I think it would be, I think the board ought to make sure that the document is reflective of the priorities that you want to see accomplished in this horizon of five years. But understanding that it is a fluid living document and that in all likelihood pending, um, you know. Unforeseen revenue or, or change, um, in how we. Uh, you know, collect some of that via stormwater fee or some other opportunity or a tax increase, whatever options that the board elects to implement. That we're going to have to be, we're going to have to be shuffling some things around, not necessarily decisions that have to be made at the capital improvement program stage. But certainly things that as we move into the operating budget and we start to get a bigger picture, a better sense of. How this number in the, in the C I P will, um, complement or, or factor into the overall. Operating budget, because there's a lot of things that are not reflected in here. Um, even though Eric tries to, you know, kind of incorporate some of those assumptions into his projection of, of fund balance. But. I, I don't know that any actuals will be helpful for the capital improvement program, I mean, I, we can look at past C I Ps and show the projection of those, but. It's not really an accurate comparison, I, in my opinion, because some of those numbers. In previous C I Ps are misleading as well, you, you really want to look at. Actual expenditures year to year versus budgeted expenditures year to year, which you will find in just about all cases. Um, our actual expenses are less than budget. So even that, I, if, if it gives you some context or if it's helpful at all, I direct you to the comprehensive annual financial report, that's got a lot of really good detail. Particularly as it pertains to the prior fiscal year, but you could teach some trend analysis in that as well. And, um, you know, Eric can, can fill in any of the blanks if you have specifics on it.
Well, that's fair, you know, as a planning document, then it, it becomes less helpful, I think, if it's. If it wasn't looked at before. When, when listing these projects to say, okay, we need to keep this in line with what the. Deficit has been running or what, what is acceptable to keep us from getting to this five million dollar number at the end. So, you know, one thing I would take as an example is the road improvement. So if we're on, you know, a grade A improvement schedule. Where you're micro servicing this group of roads every certain number of years, whatever that is, and rebuilding these every certain number of years. Then maybe that needs to be stretched out, maybe we need to be at a B. Until we catch up and not at an A, I don't know, I'm, this is not my area of expertise, but when I look at it, that's something I can say. Maybe this is what needs to be stretched out so that we can even out this budget a little bit. So if there are other things like that, I think I was hoping to come into the process a little bit. A little bit more even and not quite this, um. This divided between our expenditures and revenues, and then just to go back to the stormwater fee, I think that balances out, I think anything projected to come in is projected to be spent, so I think.
In some respects, yes, but there are other, there are other opportunities to shift. Expenditures out of capital reserve into the stormwater fee that are discussions for. The operating budget, but to answer your question, this is, this is really an opportunity for you as the elected officials to tell us what you would like to see removed, I think, um. I don't want to speak for Dave as far as the condition indexes go, we respect to roads, but there's, it's, it's certainly, I mean. We have a general rubric that we've attempted to follow over the years, and that's that roughly eighty or lower condition index is when it becomes a candidate for some kind of. Uh, attention, whether it be micro surfacing or reclamation or repaving or whatever is most appropriate for that particular. Um, circumstance, but as far as whether that's the right place to be or not, or whether you should, we ought to be extending the life of our roads. To maybe when they're a seventy or lower condition index, those are policy decisions that, that ought to be made by the board. And understanding that. Deferring those costs come at greater expenses, future program years down the road, if you say we're not going to micro this year. Because this road isn't all that bad, we can stretch it out another few years, you may not be able to micro surface that. When it comes back around again, you might have to repay, so, you know, there's, these are all, they're, they're all moving parts, particularly when it comes to road maintenance. Where you may defer your costs to a future program year, but those costs may go up depending on what exactly you're kicking back, but. I, I just don't, I don't think that it's really a staff function to say, well, you know, we really shouldn't be doing eighty run the roads, we should be doing seventies or sixties. If, you know, you, I think the board has an understanding, this is where the road tour really helps. Um, contextualize some of this, because what you see in the condition index. May appear differently, or there may be other conditions when you're actually driving them that you may say, well, this isn't really a priority because it's a small road, there's not a lot of use or whatever the case may be. Um, so there's no, there's no real standard way to answer that question, but certainly, we, I, I think we would all welcome, I would certainly welcome. If there's any projects that you set, that you see in the C I P horizon that you say, you know, we just can't do this right now, let's put it. On ice for a while or revisit it in a future year, future program year. Obviously, with a five and a half million dollar projected deficit in the fun, in, in our overall fund balance. You know, it, it's got to be pretty significant in order for us to be able to make up that gap.
Thank you, and that's, that's kind of what I mean, that's what I was trying to look for is some places we can do that.
Yeah, I echo what Supervisor Strickland said, and, um, so I, I mean, I think. And, and in trying to do that, I was sort of looking at, um. The budget and seeing what can be prudently, uh, sort of reallocated or cut, uh, and so on, and, uh. The biggest ticket item is the fire station, so that's, uh, two point eight five million dollars, and, uh. I mean. I hate to bring it up because, you know, I have a fire station close to my house, so it's, uh. It's sort of like, I'm not trying to say that someone else should not have that, um, but, um. Are there options available, you know, uh, I think, uh, like, uh, Mr. Miller said last time. Uh, are there innovative options where we can get people protected in the west end of the township? Without doing that or delaying that to a, a day when we have more funds, so I would like to put that on the table to be discussed.
I should note, i- it's not that there, that there's no, that there's not, there's no protection in the west end of the township. Um, a lot of the, um, direction to move ahead with the fire station, at least to date, has been driven by an assessment and evaluation that was conducted. About four years ago by Steve Bear, Center Region Fire Director, and his assessment was, um. In summarizing a very, you know, a, a lot of information in a very short way, was that, yes, we could use a fire, a satellite fire station. To improve service delivery to the west end of the township and as well as to other more rural areas of both Ferguson and Half Moon, if you get into Port Matilda and Warriors Mark. They could put apparatus in it tomorrow, if I said there's a building there, they could, they could find, uh, they could use the space, so there's a, there's a need from it, for it in the sense that. It could do what was asked of, of it to, what is asked of it to do, which is to improve the service delivery from. Rural standards to suburban standards, so, you know, the question really, and again, kind of a policy decision for the board is. Do you expect Western Ferguson Township residents to have access to urban or suburban levels of service delivery? That was one of the things we hoped to be able to give you some more insight on with the fire station needs assessment. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get that off the ground this year, which is why we're suggesting we push that into a future program year, but. You know, assuming that the answer to that question is yes, we do want to improve service delivery to the west end. Well, then we're talking about a much more narrow scope, we kind of have a sense of where that fire station needs to be situated. Um, which is not in an inexpensive part of the township, you're talking about. In all likelihood, settling it somewhere on West Whitehall Road between Nixon and Plainfield Road. Um, you know, where you're encumbered by agricultural conservation easements and other issues there that make the land costs expensive. Now, if you say that you wanted to take a different approach and, uh, put it where it's needed most, that might give you a different answer, it may not improve that service delivery to the west end, but it may be a better value. To the regional fire protection program for other reasons. You could take your, the third option that you just highlighted, Mr. Metra, which is to just say. We, we can't do this right now, we're going to put it on the shelf. And, you know, if that's the direction that you go, then that's, I, I don't think you'd have any objection, certainly from my office. Um, because I, I just don't know, given all the other priorities that the board has articulated. That that is something that really is in the realm of feasible, and even if it were, is something that was really truly needed. Um, you know, in the sense of, of, at least from the perspective of providing, uh, fire response. But it's a priority, or it's been something that's been described or discussed at length by the board in the past. And thus far, the direction has been to keep moving forward and, and kind of see what happens and what materializes with that assessment.
Um, Laura here, I personally am not at all interested in removing this entirely from the SIP. I think it is a priority, and I think it would be a disservice to the folks in the west end to remove this entirely before we get handle on their perceptions of need. Um, as Dave has mentioned.
Yeah, I, I would say, from my point of view, I'm looking at this. Is I don't want to minimize the fact that we're looking at a big deficit. At the end of, or over the course of five years, if we do everything. In this C I P. Without any other income like grants or something coming in. Because I think it, it tends to. Build in a lot of the costs. Like with new developments coming in, we look at, do we need police, additional police officer, do we need additional staff somewhere? Because these things will be increasing, but we don't really look at completely, I think Eric tries to build it in, but you can't project. How much the earned income tax will go up by people living in those houses, because you don't know how many will be built in that time. But the costs also go along with that, so I think we take a somewhat. Conservative view of what our costs are going to be. But don't. Don't take, uh, a really open view of what the income to go with that cost might be. And I think because it is really. You know, we're going to do something by the end of that five years that. Works that out, and a lot of times what it is, is something moves further out, other times is we get a grant, we get funding through, uh. You know, the, uh, M P O, we get different things that. We can't build in because we don't know they're coming, but in the five years, you know, next five years, they may. So I guess to me, seeing that number. Of a deficit isn't really that. Disconcerting. Knowing that year by year, we're going to be addressing those things, and something will move further out if it has to, or we'll come up with other income if we have to, but. I, I guess I would, I would just as soon leave the fire, you know, fire department in. As, and recognize that things may change, if, uh, our type of fire service changes, that may change. Any assessment of needs. If it doesn't, you know, if we could work out some other coverage, like we mentioned in the, uh, special meeting, that might be an option, I don't know if that's even a feasible thing. But we have five years, I mean, we're looking five years out, so things will. I think we need to address those things as we go, now. I think we need to address those things as we go. Now, when we get to the regular, you know, the annual budget, I think we have to be very careful, you know. You can't, as Dave said, we can't go negative on our. General fund, we have to find a way to deal with that, but. I I'm not as concerned about a five year projection, so. I I guess that's just my thought on it, but.
Steve, it's Laura. I I would agree with you on that, and I think the reason why I think it's important to keep the fire station in there is because. It's also a way to communicate priorities. So. As you're saying, like it might get bumped and bumped and bumped, but each consecutive board is going to understand that that. Is it is a priority. And so you're right, if we don't have the money in the budget to do it, we won't do it. But we would still recognize that it's a need and something that we have to work toward and plan. So I would support that.
Yeah, I'll just add, I I think that's a good point that Mr. Nanny makes. It's it's as a planning document, sort of akin to the long range transportation plan with a smaller scope. You get, you get these items on the horizon, they're on the radar, they may be deferred to program years. But it's an understanding that, and this is why we commonly see items twenty twenty in the, at the, in the later reaches of the capital improvement program budget as. Maybe more wishlist items that. You know, as opportunities present themselves, either through grants, regional partnerships or township, you know, debt or or just. Fund balance, then you know, we can, we can prioritize those on an as needed basis, but it does keep them. You know, in the crosshairs so that we can. See that that, you know, ultimately that's the, that's the spot where we want to land. These are, these are projects that the board is desirous of of moving forward. It's a good point.
Steve, I have something else I wanted to talk about in the SIP.
Okay.
Other than the fire station. It also relates to like priorities, but also whose responsibility it is, and I'm just going back to the housing study. And I'm seeing it's in twenty twenty two. Fine with leaving it there, but for me, in terms of this item. I just don't see this as our responsibility in that I think that this really lies. In the Center Region Planning. Agency. And so again, I'm I'm fine with leaving it in there. It affordable housing, it's it's definitely a priority, but. The way I see it is it just, it it doesn't belong in this, in this planning document or our budget, it belongs in the regional budget. So just wanted to make that comment. Just so folks know where I stand policy wise. Thanks.
Thank you.
I would agree with that. You know, and maybe what I would suggest is possibly moving it back out a few years and seeing what. Comes of the studies currently being done at the Center Region Planning Agency because they are. Doing the land consumption study and affordable housing study and. And I agree, these are important studies and I think they are best done regionally. We talked about it at TLU today. So I would. I wouldn't be opposed to leaving it in there, but I would push it back. So that you know what it is you need to look at after seeing the completed studies that are being done and maybe they'll answer a lot of what. We're interested in knowing. But I would give them some more time to complete those things. Twenty twenty one might not be. A really accurate year for them to assess vacancy rates and building rates and that kind of thing, so. Hopefully it's more normal, but it might not be. So I would give them a little bit more time to complete those things and. Have a little extra time to evaluate the results.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
You have a a program year in mind, should we put it at the end in in twenty five or twenty four?
Maybe twenty four.
Okay.
I I guess my preference is to keep it where it is. Because I think we are. Right now, looking at establishing our own. Affordable housing. Program that will have funding that we need to decide what to do with. So I mean, my preference would be to keep it where it is, but you know, that. Will be a decision with, you know, the board can make if if someone wants. To make a motion to change it to a certain particular time, we can do that. As a vote.
I see your point. I just, I see this as as different. So I'm I'm having trouble seeing how this regional study is. Is so directly related to the policy decision of how we're going to. Use that, you know, any possible fee and loo money from. And workforce, workforce housing or affordable housing program. So. You know, I don't, I don't even mind leaving it, you know, in twenty two or twenty three, it's not, it's not twenty twenty one, which is kind of my point. I wouldn't want to overlap studies that are currently being done, but. I I think we'll need a different discussion about about those funds, but.
I agree. I also don't see the connection between this study and the ordinance and. It's, it's not a review of other. Of other affordable housing ordinances and how they're used or how successful they are, it's. It's really. I don't, I don't, I also don't see the connection, but again, I I don't care that much about leaving it in twenty twenty two, but. I I really think that this, that this is a regional project. So.
Okay.
So do we want to make a change on it or?
Um, I mean, I would just say maybe move it back a year, you know, that's kind of what I was saying if. Because my interpretation of the study as I read the description is it's regional and not so. You know, create, it says create a holistic regional strategy. Is what's in this, is what the study is described as. So it's not really focused on us using. Those funds and that's kind of what the study CRPA is doing right now and. The and really the direction that the TLU committee is really interested in going right now. So. And I think Ferguson would be a great lead for those kinds of things. So you know, working with the borough who already has these programs, but I'm just. We can leave it. I mean, it it really is.
Yeah, and it will be when it gets to the budget time, we'll have more detailed discussion of that.
I have a question about leaving it. I remember Jenna before said something about. The Borough has it in their SIP too for the same year, and I think maybe if we, if we're serious about. Thinking this should be at the cog, that maybe it would be better to move it out a year because if. If the Borough and we are trying to align, if our, if we're leaning towards not. Doing it in twenty twenty two, I think maybe a clear message would be good. To communicate that to the Borough if they want to be lined up with us or to push toward cog. Making an effort. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that we move it to twenty twenty three.
I'll second, this is Lisa.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on it? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Aye. So the motion carries, so we'll make that change. Are there? Any other changes that anyone wants to make? Before we move it toward public hearing?
So.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to. Okay, so I I wanted to bring up. The, if you notice what I'm doing is I'm looking at the biggest picture, the biggest, biggest ticket items. So one of them is the Park Hills Drainage Project. And in general, that's like one point eight million dollars. In general, I agree with the need for it and. You know, I agree with the reason and I agree with the project and so on. But my question was, and this happened, I think, a year before I joined. When the board discussed and approved things and so I'm, at least two members are here from there. So I wanted to find out. From the board members and the staff. Is that, you know, the one point eight million, are there opportunities to do something without sacrificing the environmental? Positive impacts. Is there a cheaper option or a way to bring that cost down?
Hey, can you maybe cover some of the history on that and how we got to where we are with the design that's proposed?
Sure. So prior to my tenure with Ferguson Township, there was a design. Of remediation to the Park Hills Drainage Channel. And. It was in the CIP at some point in time and then removed. And then in my twenty year tenure, it's been in and out. So for about thirty years, it's been. On the books, so to speak, the original design. By Unitec, now Pentair, was a rock lined armored channel. That is a regulated waterway and rock line channels are not. The direction that DEP wants to see stream rehabilitation. And erosion control directed. So this method is a more natural environmentally sensitive type of design. And that lent itself to some of the costs that you see. Flood plane analysis need done. In the meantime, because our project is. Been somewhat delayed, West Penn Power has recognized that they have exposed electric lines that are live. And so. Have moved ahead and are starting, they're doing directional drilling now. In Park Hills to relocate. Those lines from back lot to front lot. So you know, some of those things are proceeding, but that gives you a little bit of the. Kind of the history of. The cost increases and how long the project's been needed and a history of it being delayed in the past.
And and I would add to that too, thanks Dave, that you know, the board, as we were proceeding with the design of this. Probably about two years ago now. You know, had an opportunity to look at some alternatives to what was ultimately selected, which is more of a natural stream. Repair or rehabilitation project. So you know, I think if if the board were to say, well, you know, we can't. Do this. Now, remember, we're we're hopeful that we're going to get a significant amount of the construction offset through some federal funding. But if the board said we want to go a different direction, we would be redesigning the project at this point, should be a cost associated with that. And you know, we likely be looking at a product that at least is not as, maybe it has the benefits of of preventing the erosion or. You know, preventing the stream from encroaching more on private residences that that but. The the stream right now, but you wouldn't get the kind of look and aesthetics and environmental qualities that the board was interested in proceeding and pursuing. With this particular design. So we'd be kind of starting over. With the understanding that we were going to do maybe a more traditional method of stream bank restoration that maybe isn't in the direction that. DEP wants to see or isn't something that residents might find aesthetically pleasing or doesn't have the same kind of environmental benefits as far as. You know, the ecology of that vicinity that you're going to get from what's proposed. But I would definitely say that what is being proposed is a more costly construction project than you might typically see. With a more traditional methodology.
Dave, if we did a redesign that was not as likable to DEP, wouldn't that? Also affect our ability to get grants like the one we might be getting?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so it might be the case that even though it's cheaper. And the design and construction that we end up bearing more of the costs ourselves perhaps.
Yes, I think in that particular, this particular project, a penny saved may be a pound foolish.
The the one other thing I've pointed out is. Add to Dave's history of it is at least once, and I think maybe twice. Since the time I've been on the board, we've done repairs along that drainage way. And. When we did, the board chose to go with a less expensive option than what was proposed. And I think if we had gone with the original one, it was about a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar repair. Which the board said was too expensive, so we went with something less. And now we're looking at a million and a half dollar repair. And I think if we were to. Say this should be put off or do something, you know, just to get by. Some board in the future is going to be looking at a two and a half million dollar repair.
But this is, this is also an opportunity. We were talking a little bit about the stormwater fee and I believe that I'm representing this correctly, correct me if I'm wrong. Where it's, it certainly is a candidate for stormwater fee financing or, you know, funding through a mechanism like a stormwater fee, but that's not how we've accounted for it in the CIP. So is that correct, Eric?
That's correct.
Yeah, so.
One million dollar grant and then a five hundred thousand dollar loan.
And then a loan, right. So we pay the debt service back with stormwater fee revenue if the board were interested in pursuing that because this is, or pursuing that because this is. An eligible expense under that program. So that would. Kind of, kind of illustrates what I meant earlier when we were discussing this. We said, yes, in fact, it's kind of a cost neutral item overall, the stormwater fee. But there are other components of the CIP that we could work into the stormwater model. If the board chose to go that route, that might further reduce that projected deficit.
Just one quick question about the timing of the grant and construction. What is that? How how far would we be in before we would know when we get the, if we get the grant or not?
I think construction's two years out. So hopefully we would know about the grant next year. Or within six months, it could be this.
Yeah, we should know this, this month or next. I believe the the announcement date is the fall, this fall.
Because I I agree with where Presenjit was going. I don't, I didn't hear him suggest doing a a patch. Patch and fill procedure, but you know, maybe just doing a. A less aesthetically pleasing design, but something that is still highly functional. So. You know, maybe to look into what those options are if that grant doesn't come through, I think. I think I would be open to doing that, but obviously waiting to see if that grant is. Is awarded makes sense at this point.
We can certainly do that. There's, there's, there's absolutely some. Sunk cost already in this project. We've been working on permitting and design for some months now, over a year, in fact. Right now, NTM Engineering is pursuing a letter of map revision. With the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA. So there's some call, and that's based on the design that was approved by the board. So we've been. You know, kind of marching down one road. If we wanted to restart at square one, we would lose some of that, maybe not all of it. We try to. You know, duplicate design where we could, so we're not incurring the cost again, but we can keep that option open. I believe we had some discussion, Dave, I don't want to talk out of school here, but about the segments of the channel. And how we might parse those out so that we could stretch that cost out over time. I don't know ultimately where we landed on that, but maybe.
Yeah, in some previous CIPs, I I had construction staggered in. Three different years, three different stretches. And through the process of years and time and reviews, it's currently shown as, you know, one project. So yes, there's the economy of scale of, you know, building it all at once, but. You could design it at once and then if it made sense, you could let. Contracts, starting with the uppermost reach and then work your way down. But what that would do, you know, I don't know how much you would do for a five year CIP. Because instead of all the construction being in twenty twenty two, you'd have a third of it in twenty two and then twenty three and then twenty four. So it doesn't change the bottom line on a five year horizon, but it. Depending on how you're financing or funding it, it could shift the burden from one year to three years, but I think Eric just said we're. It may be a loan, so in that sense, it doesn't matter as much, right? So that may be some of what I have just talked to ourselves from a. So that may be some of what I have just talked to ourselves from a three-year construction window to a one-year.
But then you're, you feel that we would probably know about this grant by the time the budget, uh, timing rolls around?
Hopefully. We, we were unsuccessful in a previous round of grant funding for this project, but NTM and, and the team that's working on this project was confident that we would be a viable candidate for funding with the second round, which is what we're currently pursuing.
I guess I'd be comfortable leaving it where it is. And then maybe, and reassessing after we see what the results of the, uh, award of the grant are.
Whenever it's appropriate, Dave or Steve, could I do a screen share related to the discussion on road indexes?
Uh, sure. Yeah. I think we're sort of moving from one topic to our next now, so it's a good time.
So Paver is the software that we use. And what this illustrates is not necessarily a number, but just words that take you from good through poor to failure as a rating, the hundred being a top and zero on the bottom. And this is time. And what, what they're trying to show here is that the way pavements degrade from a brand-new pavement over the first couple of years, and then they seem to hold themselves, you know, fairly steady. But then there's a, a point in time where they start to degrade quickly and drop off. And what the graphic shows you is that it may cost you a dollar in this year to rehab the roads over this long a time, but within a short period of time, the condition drops so rapidly that it could cost you four or five times as much to rehab the road. So, you know, there's reports and statistics and whatnot that I have, have not shared with the board and at the appropriate time can maybe do a, you know, a, a presentation. But, you know, what it's telling you is there's kind of a sweet spot on, on the scale, whatever that number is, and we've been using 80, that after a certain amount of time, if you let the roads go too far, too much, you're playing a pretty big game of catch-up to get the roads back to the condition that they were, and it's costing you significantly more money. So we like to do our work right around here. We don't want to spend unnecessarily too soon. We don't want to do it too late where it's significantly more. So that is, I just wanted to share that with you. That's, that's some of the thought of using the pavement condition rating as, as a basis of, you know, trying to put it in a, in a year of paving. Okay, thanks. Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think every, at least most of the members of the board that I have talked to and so on agree with that assessment. And what we are trying to do is to find out, can we get as close enough to that $1 point without falling off the cliff? And how much, you know, keep a little bit of safety factor, but not too much safety factor. And so with, i- if that's what we want to do is, and knowing, you know, knowing your scale and knowing there is some amount of uncertainty involved and keeping a little bit of a buffer, is 80 the right number? Or should we go to a different number? Or should we go to 80 plus some other characteristics? So, you know, I'm trying to figure out, is your decision-making model sort of fine-tuned enough? If we had the money, you know, we'll have to do it anyway, might as well do it now. So that's fine. But, you know, right now, I'm trying to fine-tune your system to poke it and see if you can push it to a point where it's not risky, not significantly more risky. But, you know, Deppert thinks that doesn't increase our risk that much. And is that, if we lower the number to 75 or 70, would that be, you know, prudent overall with respect to budgeting and funding? If we, let's say, if we are ready to give up a little bit on the comfort factor, but not on the maintenance and life of the road and overall budget factor, can we push that, your model, a little bit more? Or is this it? So that's what I want your opinion as an expert.
Yeah, I'd have to look into it a little bit further. You know, my discussion, the Paver system with the township engineer yielded 80 as our target, doesn't mean we couldn't fine-tune it and, you know, continue to look at it, but that, that, you know, that was the basis of, of putting the CIP together. And we can continue to, you know, get better at it.
I would even suggest that that wouldn't have to be a permanent change if you've decided this is the optimal number, the optimal system to go with, that what you were looking, what I'm looking for, I think what Prusenjit is looking for, wouldn't need to be a permanent change in that system, that it would be something temporary in these uncertain economic times. And just to be very conservative here for, you know, a period of three years or what have you, whatever we determine is most appropriate as we kind of come out of this. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that I'm looking for any kind of permanent change to the system that you're, that you're going with, but more of a, where, where could we push it as Prusenjit said, and even thinking about that in, in temporary terms?
And, and I would, I would note, there are roads that are in the horizon of the Capital Improvement Program budget that are targeted for repaving or targeted for replacement in a certain program year that currently are at a higher condition index than even 80. The anticipation is that over the years, they will degrade by a certain factor. So if we have them aligned in the CIP for replacement in 2024, right now, you may look at it and say, you know, okay, well, it's a, it's a PCI of 85, we should take that out and defer, well, maybe in 2024, we're predicting it's going to be in the 60s or in the 70s. So it becomes a little bit of a fluid target. I believe we provided the board with the condition index ratings for all the roads, at least that are in the horizon of the CIP, right, Dave?
Yes.
So certainly, if there are candidate projects that the board says, well, look, you know, we, we want to push that condition index back to 75 or to 70, you know, even if it is just a temporary policy decision in the sense that, or to be, to be more flexible in response to uncertain revenue or uncertain financial positions, then, you know, we, we can certainly work those changes into the document. I would also point out that there's more to, at least in the past, there's been more to the prioritization and decision-making of road projects than simply consideration of their condition index. You know, think about Bergman Court, for example, that has met condition index ratings for a number of years, many years for repaving or, or project work. But the board has deferred that because in throughout the, you know, during the field views and the road tours and just in your own experience as a ward, you've identified other projects that are maybe in better condition, but are also more heavily used and maybe have more benefit to the community. So, you know, it's, it's difficult to get the full picture just from, you know, saying, well, okay, let's move it to 75 and, you know, for this year, and then that'll be our target number. But you have those condition indexes and you have your familiarity with the roads and, you know, your understanding as elected officials of what the right policy decisions ought to be for the township. So we can certainly move candidate projects around in the scope of the CIP based on what makes the most sense for the board.
Yeah, there are very few roads that are in there that are currently over 80. And five years from now, the index number is going to be going down.
I mean, I'm comfortable leaving it there, but my, I would like, I, you know, Dave Modraker said that he would look into things and see if others, you know, other systems make more, make sense. So I would like him to follow up on that at some point. For now, I'm fine with where it is.
There anything else with CIP?
Uh, two other things that we had talked about. One is the ordinance enforcement officer and the other is the transportation study.
Yeah, I can report on the transportation study. Provided a narrative. I think it's in the memo that Dave has in the packet. And I'm just trying to get that in front of me. Yeah, it's on page three. Yeah, I, I can talk through it if, if you'd like. Is that, is that what you want, we're asking for?
It was just something that we discussed at the work session. So my suggestion at the work session had been to also postpone this one so that Pine Hall and Harder Farms are further developed, because then we'd have a better idea of what's in place and traffic under those more built-out conditions. It's currently in there for 2023 right now. So what are your thoughts on that?
So we did a study, I mean, I'd, I'd like to see it stay where it's at in the budget. I understand, you know, the concerns that you're presenting. Anytime we do a study like this, we look at the current zoning, projected traffic, and then we do growth projections with planning department. So I don't know, you know, how far you'd want to wait until the areas are built out. And at that point, you know, it may negate some of the benefits of doing a comprehensive township-wide traffic study.
Well, I guess, you know, those plans will have traffic studies done with them. And I'm just trying to weigh the benefit of using the projections when, or waiting until these things are a little bit more built out. It's an expensive study and we wouldn't be redoing it again for a while. So I'm, so that's why I'm suggesting pushing it back several years until those, until those projects are more built out, knowing that we have some transportation impact studies current on, on those plans.
Laura here, I just wanted to add that this is another area that I really wish we had more regional coordination. I think that a lot of times, traffic impacts come from development in adjacent municipalities. And I'd really like to see the Center Region Planning Agency take the lead on something like this, or at least do it in a coordinated effort along with other municipalities. I don't know if I've ever talked, if we've ever talked about doing anything like that, but I think it would really be beneficial.
Yeah, I agree with that, too.
I agree with that.
I think that's a good suggestion and one that I can bring up at a discussion at TLU and see where other municipalities are on that as well, see where they're, how updated their studies are, if they have traffic, traffic studies done routinely and that kind of thing, and see what kind of regional approach we could take.
That'd be great, Lisa, because we, back when I was on TLU, we always used to talk about, why aren't we coordinated with this? Why aren't we coordinated with this? Well, why aren't we coordinated with this?
It does kind of get dominated by land, the transportation and land use.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, it's a good point. So that would be my two cents is to push this off longer. So I don't know how anybody else feels about that or what, I mean, I would think at least 2025, if not, but, so I would say 2025 so that it stays on, to back to Laura's point about keeping a, keeping it on there as a, an aim.
I would be okay with that. Go ahead, Steve, sorry.
I was just asking if that was a motion or?
I, I kind of wanted to see where everybody was at with it, but I'd be happy to make that motion.
I'm good with it, Lisa.
Okay, I will move that we move the transportation study to 2025.
Second in, Patty.
Okay, motion, a second, and the other discussion. And that change. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. Motion carries.
And then the last thing we discussed was that ordinance enforcement officer, and that was bringing that position to full-time from part-time. I think I have that correct, and that was 2021, making that adjustment. That was just another discussion point we hadn't concluded.
That is correct.
Yeah, I think, um, the, it's the board's discretion, you know, I, I think Jenna and Chief Albright would say that, you know, with a part-time ordinance enforcement officer, there are things that are not being done. So meaning that we could justify even currently in this present year, moving the ordinance officer from part-time to full-time. Right now, some of the enforcement duties of that particular individual are being supplemented or picked up by some of the patrol officers where, where needed. So traffic and for, you know, traffic, traffic tickets and things like that. If we had a full-time ordinance officer, we could use that individual to do more enforcement in that regard. They could spend more time patrolling, you know, checking for, more proactively checking for violations like either grass and weeds or snow and ice on the sidewalks, you know, just sort of generally free up some more of their time to do more proactive enforcement. This has been an, an item that's been pushed around in the CIP since, oh, I would say at least the last six or seven years. It's kind of made its way to the top of the Capital Improvement Program now, which is why it's shown in the next program year. The board wanted to push it back, we could do that, too. It would just be a matter of knowing what year you might want to target that shift in. I will say that we've had quite a bit of turnover at the position of ordinance officer over the last couple of years, and I think that is partly due to its part-time nature. It's a lot easier to retain an employee at a full-time, in a full-time role than it is to, you know, retain somebody in a part-time role, particularly somebody who's expected to have, you know, the qualifications that the ordinance officer is expected to have, which is kind of a quasi-law enforcement role. Our current ordinance officer, Derek Hoover, splits his time between the Center Region Emergency Management Office, he's the deputy director, assisting Sean Kaufman and then, and the township for about 20 hours each per week, roughly. I think he spends a little more time with us than he does over there. But, so I think things are okay for right now, but I know that he's been looking for a full-time opportunity, and if this opportunity presented itself, he would be probably the, the candidate that would capitalize on that. I think he would be willing to, to, you know, stay with the township on a full-time capacity. If we continue to do it part-time, I'm not sure how long Derek would stay, given that he's got another position currently right now with the emergency management office. But, you know, we, it would be a challenge to fill, as it's been in the past, another person in that role. I think in the last seven or eight years, we've been through probably about five I think in the last seven or eight years, we've been through probably about five ordinance enforcement officers, you know, that I can think of. Some, you know, just due to retirement, but others, you know, due to the, I think our last one, or maybe two ordinance officers ago, rather, would have stayed if it were a full-time opportunity. So that gives you some context to consider as you're weighing your decision.
Anyone?
Yeah.
Any thoughts on that subject?
Yeah, my preference is that, I mean, if I, I mean, I think that things are working reasonably. I'm not too concerned about the grass ordinance. I think that's, you know, leaving that aside, but I'm concerned about the snow cleaning and so on. And but I don't see a whole bunch of people not happy with where things are and, you know, and a need particularly for more proactive ordinance enforcement. So I would be fine leaving it at halftime, knowing that it's not ideal from a recruitment perspective and addressing it if it becomes a more of a problem and we are receiving lots of complaints that we contact upon and things like that.
Anyone else?
I'd agree with Prisangit and maybe the year to move it then would be just bump it out one year would be my suggestion so that it's still in the forefront.
I guess my thought on it is I think we are considering ordinances that may require additional enforcement over the next year or so. We may be actually adding to that job. I don't know. Some of the things we're talking about may be police enforcement or other types of enforcement. But we are, I mean, we have been considering other ordinances that may require someone to enforce them, so.
Is that true? I'd be, I was wondering about that. So like if we do something with, you know, the upcoming fire discussion, if we did something like that, would this person have any purview over answering those calls? Like, I don't think, because I think this is like a day job situation and those would be night kinds of things, but maybe you're referring to something else, Steve, like the mask.
Well, I was thinking of things with the, you know, like a masking ordinance. A, you know, the fire ordinance, you know, we're talking about different things where we would be requiring someone to monitor things. We're saying we want monitored, so. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I would be in favor of keeping it if that's the case, but I'm also not that concerned about the weed ordinance, to be honest. Um, yeah. And I don't think we'll ever get sign regulation down, so I'm kind of giving up on that to temporary ones anyway. I just had another question, like this person wouldn't be able to like fill in when Jeff Wrestler's off or anything, and then there's delays in passing, you know, permits on and that kind of stuff. Would this person have any kind of purview over maybe that, filling in in that area?
It's, it's possible. The ordinance officer is kind of a deputy of the zoning administrator currently. It is a sworn office, so he does have the ability to write citations and things like that. But currently, and Jenna, you can correct me if I'm off base here, the, our ordinance doesn't enable anybody to do zoning enforcement other than the zoning administrator. So even for zoning issues that Derek identifies, they still have to be accompanied by a citation written from the zoning officer. I think what you're talking about, Mr. Nanny, is more related to the issuance of permits when there might be delays in that process. And I guess that that's probably not an appropriate role for the ordinance officer. It is something that we could do in a different way, either through the planning director herself could be empowered with the ability to issue zoning permits in the absence of the zoning administrator. And commonly, you see that in municipalities. Community planners, another option, you know, for consideration. So I would suggest it's probably not the right role for the ordinance officer, but it is something that we could tackle in different ways.
Thanks. That's something I've heard feedback on and be interested in trying to address if we can.
I know you just made Jenna happy.
Sorry, Jenna.
No, I meant that sincerely. I'm not.
Oh, okay. Okay.
It's something Jen and I just had a conversation about probably maybe not even a month ago, because, you know, in her experience, you, you know, with State College Borough, they've have similar framework that's in place that allows for more than just one person to issue permits.
That'd be great.
Um, I just wanted to comment on what Steve said. I thought about that, too, with the, the ordinances that we're discussing later. And I very much hope that the masking and distancing ordinance are as temporary as can be. So that's why I hesitate adding any full-time or additional staffing to that. You know, just, you know, for that in particular, because hopefully that is not a long-term situation, but I do recognize what you're saying. And it could be an issue, but I would, I would hesitate to add a full-time position to move this from part-time to full-time because of that.
Okay, well. Is there a motion then?
So I guess I would, I would move that we move the ordinance enforcement officer transition from part-time to full-time from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any other? Comment?
I'm really torn. It's Laura. I'm really torn on this. I'm very torn on my vote on this.
Okay.
Can, can staff talk to me a little bit about things other than the weed ordinance that this person would be able to keep up with better?
For planning inside of it, Derek normally handles sign enforcement. And that ebb and flows, obviously, with elections. That's definitely a busier season for us. That seems to be his job. It goes by seasons. So what we have coming up are signs followed by ice and snow. He does a lot of the postings for a lot of our properties, for saying hearing board, conditional uses. And then we get back into spring and summer and he's doing weeds and grass. He helps a lot with animal control with police. He does more on police side. And that takes up a good amount of his time. I know that. And I'm sure the chief could go into that more details.
For public works, he assists with much debris and dumping in the public right away. Today, I was contacted by the road superintendent that we had another concrete truck empty out their load at the end of a road in roadside farms next to the park. So I asked them to get hold of the ordinance enforcement officer, and if we have, you know, debris issues or if trucks are tracking mud out of the, you know, from Toll Brothers out onto Whitehall Road, or those types of things are often what he'll help our department with.
And then two, on our end, I mean, barking dogs, animal, we get a lot of problems at Tudic Dog Park. So he spends some of his time up there, you know, making sure that the rules are being followed in addition to everything else everybody said.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, so a motion is to move from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. We're going full-time, so that's correct, isn't it? Okay, nobody's objecting, so. Okay, thanks. Okay, so on that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye.
Aye.
And I don't think I heard Laura.
I, oh, sorry, I was opposed.
Opposed. Okay, so that motion does not pass, though. Okay. So is there anything else on the CIP before we take a motion to schedule here?
I'm sorry, Steve. It's Laura. I have one more thing that we, thanks, that we discussed. I don't, I didn't see it pop back up, but I could be wrong. Dave Mybricker, we briefly talked about some kind of software that would help you be able to track costs attributed to parks versus other public works things. Is that, is that, that's not in the SIP? Is that something that would need to be in the SIP? Is that something you need to do more research on? Do you know about that?
Probably need probably need to do a little bit of more research. It was on my kind of to-do list and radar screen a number of years ago, and then it's kind of dropped off. But it, it's a work order system and an asset management system. There was a time when we were using a, looking at a certain software cartograph, and then we started looking at City Works and Dude Solutions. So I've, I've approached, you know, the manager and the finance director and, you know, the township engineer. We've talked about a number of different systems, but we, we haven't settled on anyone in particular.
Okay, do you think that it would be possible for us to move that conversation forward over the next couple of months and see what we could come up with in regard to that?
Yeah, I can do more research, for example, in advance of the operating budget, if that makes sense.
That'd be great. Thanks a lot.
Dave?
I'm just looking for you to nod your head, too.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, anything else? In that case, I would take a motion to schedule the public hearing.
This is Lisa. I'll move that the Board of Supervisors authorize advertisement of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-five Capital Improvement Program budget for public hearing on Tuesday, September eighth, twenty twenty.
Patty, seconds.
Okay, motion a second. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I think I'm gonna call for a five-minute recess and then we'll get back to the rest of the agenda here.
Steve, it's Laura. You can't tell, but I'm back.
Okay, great. How about Prisangit? Are you back yet?
Yes, I'm back.
Okay, then we have everyone poll boards here, so we'll go ahead and continue with the agenda. The next item is the consent agenda. We have two pay applications, accepting the treasurer's report, surety reduction, and also the, the draft sign ordinance amendment is on there. That's a consent agenda item, because that's just scheduling it for public hearing. So there's really no need for discussion unless somebody wants to pull it off and have a further discussion. So are there any items that anyone would care to pull off the consent agenda? For further discussion. Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve.
Let's Laura, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Prisangit, second.
Okay, have motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is a public hearing on a resolution of the Township Ferguson, Southern County, Pennsylvania, adopting an Act five thirty-seven plan update.
Thank you. The board has a copy of the resolution that's been advertised for public hearing with the agenda packet. The resolution, if adopted, would be Ferguson Township approving an update to the regional Act five thirty-seven Sewage Facilities Plan, which would primarily deal with the upgrading of the Scott Road Pump Station and Force Main, but also the Bristol Interceptors incorporated in this project as well. There was a special study that was undertaken by the University Area Joint Authority and the Center Regional Planning Agency to evaluate alternatives to what is ultimately being proposed. Ultimately, the recommendation Ultimately, the, uh, recommendation was that the optimal solution would be the, to pursue the upgrade to the pump station and the Bristol Interceptor, uh, in order to keep that facility, uh, operational. I have, um, it looks like Corey Rilk, uh, regional plan, uh, planner would send regional planning agencies here if the board has any questions. Otherwise, staff is recommending adoption of the ordinance, uh, resolution, excuse me.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so if anyone cares to address the board on this matter, this will be the time. Uh, saying none, are there any questions from the board?
Steve, I don't have a question, it's Laura, but, um, I just feel like I need to confirm for the millionth time that this is not going to be an additional special fee attached to the Pine Grove Mills residence bills, and that it will be, as it was stated in the email, um, it will be, um, a UAJ cost.
Uh, Mr. Nini, uh, I can actually say I have an email from Corey Miller right in front of me that the UAJ has no plans to add any surcharges to the quarterly bills as a result of this pump station in Forest Main. No additional speci- special purpose tapping fees will be imposed either.
Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and as a UAJ board member, our discussion was that would come out of funds that are available for normal maintenance upgrades and that sort of thing, so.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
This is Lisa, I'll move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution, adopting an Act 537 Sewage Facilities Plan Update.
Any seconds?
Okay, motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, this is a resolution, so it'll be a roll call.
This is presented as Resolution 2020-20, Mr. Nini?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mitra?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next item is a public hearing on a resolution of the Township Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, confirming the township's support of the petition to property owner, the GH Real Estate Holdings LLC to substitute the municipal noise ordinance for the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board's Regulation on Properties Located at 101 East Pine Grove Road and 115 East Pine Grove Road.
Thank you, so the board has a copy of the resolution again that's been advertised for public hearing this evening, which would be a supplement to the application submitted by, uh, the property owner of Pine Grove Hall, Elizabeth Grove, Ms. Grove is on the call, uh, this evening, in case there's any questions from board members. Uh, the purpose of the application would be to obtain a noise exemption permit from the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, which stipulates that, I believe I'm, I'm reporting this correctly, Liz, that the, um, that, that there can be no audible noise from the premises that's measurable at the property line, even if it's coming from internal to, uh, the establishment. So if, um, you know, at Pine Grove Hall, there was an interest in having even, you know, some limited music or, or entertainment, if there was a chance that that noise would carry outside the hall and audible at the property line, it could be considered a violation of the, the liquor license issued by the PLCB. One of the alternatives that's available would be for the applicant, the property owner, to apply for an exemption, and one of the requirements of that exemption process is that the you, the host municipality enact a resolution confirming a, a number of things, number one, it's support for the application. Uh, number two, that it does indeed have a, the municipality in this case has a noise ordinance in place, and then thirdly, that the municipality would, intends to enforce its noise regulations and noise permits in lieu of the PLCB standards and regulations. So we do have restrictions on noise limitations at the property le- lot, level, uh, that may be applicable to this establishment, they would not be zero, uh, you know, in terms, like zero decibels or no, no audible noise. So it would give, um, you know, Pine Grove Hall a little bit more of a, of an allowance to have some reasonable, you know, entertainment inside the venue, without concern that they might be violating their liquor license laws, provided they're in compliance with the township's ordinance. So there's a legal opinion that's included with your agenda as well, which is what I was provided from the Liquor Control Board to, uh, kind of direct the, the, um, drafting of this resolution, so it covers everything that the PLCB has said they need to see. Recommendation from staff this evening is that the board approve the resolution.
Negative. Uh, this is a public hearing, so if anyone cares to address the board on this issue, this will be the time. Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Hi Laura, move that we support this resolution. Sorry, that's probably not the one that I'm supposed to be saying, but I'm not looking at my agenda right now, will that suffice?
I would at least suggest that you modify the motion to be a, the resolution, not support.
Okay, to adopt the resolution.
Second presented.
Okay, so the motion is to adopt the resolution as presented with the agenda. Is there any further discussion?
This is Liz Grove, thank you for the opportunity to request this, I, I appreciate it.
Oh, you're quite welcome. This is a roll call, a resolution, therefore it's a roll call vote, so.
This is presented as Resolution 2020-24, Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mitra?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Mr. Nini?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Uh, next is a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, affirming support for the Pennsylvania Department of Health Directives on Universal Masking and Social Distancing to Combat the COVID-19 Pandemic.
Thank you, again, the board has a copy of the resolution advertised for public hearing with your agenda packet. Uh, the resolution affirms the support for Governor Wolf and the Pennsylvania Department of Health Directives on social pro- uh, safety protocol to combat the spread of COVID-19. Specifically, talks about the importance of masking and social distancing in public sp- uh, spaces to prevent contamination. Was authorized in July 20th for public hearing, and there was some discussion that evening, uh, on the potential enactment of an ordinance that may, uh, strengthen the regulations or strengthen the ability of the township to enforce the governor's directives on universal masking and social distancing in, in congregations. So, um, if the board wants to discuss the, the, uh, ordinance, um, or whether or not you're interested in pursuing a draft ordinance, tonight might be a good opportunity to do that in, in concert with your consideration of the resolution. I can answer questions about either or both. There has been a draft ordinance that's been prepared by the Borough of State College, I believe it's up for consideration tomorrow evening, I don't think they're gonna be acting on the ordinance necessarily, but, uh, I think they're discussing some proposed changes that were being, recommended from their Board of Health, and with the intent of, of pursuing a, uh, ordinance at an upcoming meeting, and, and so, you know, that language that's in that ordinance, I think is pretty good, it's been reviewed by their council. I don't think all of the provisions would be necessarily applicable to Ferguson Township, but I think there's importance for some regional consistency in how we, um, would enact those regulations if the board desired to pursue that any further. But really, you know, in addition to the resolution, if the board wanted to give us, uh, direction on, on whether or not to pursue drafting an ordinance or ask any questions, tonight might be a good opportunity to do that.
Thank you, Dave. Before we start the discussion, this is a public hearing, so we'll take any public comment on the resolution at this time. If anyone cares to address the board. Uh, seeing none, I would ask for a motion.
All right.
Sorry. All right, uh, I'll move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution affirming support for the Pennsylvania Department of Health Directives on Universal Masking and Social Distancing to Combat the COVID-19 Pandemic.
Present you'd second.
Okay, motion a second, any discussion? And this could be discussion on ordinance, whether we want to do an ordinance as well as discussion of the resolution itself, so.
That is my question.
Yeah, yeah, if you, either way, it's fine, because, uh, the, as far as an ordinance, let me be sure and clear on how we do it. If we decided to go forward, we would have staff draft a, an ordinance for consideration the next meeting, and then schedule a public hearing, except the.
Yeah, that's, I think it'd be appropriate for a motion to direct staff to draft a revised ordinance to be there maybe after the resolution is acted on.
Right, so that motion would follow the resolution vote if I did, yeah, okay. Okay, Lisa, you had a comment or?
Yeah, so do you want us to discuss the ordinance then as well now, or? Make a motion?
Yeah, I think, I think we can, we can do that, and then do two separate motions.
Okay, um, I think that the resolution was really well written, and I appreciate that, so I'm, um, very supportive of that. And then also, I'm supportive of drafting and ordinance. I read the draft of the one that's being discussed in the borough, and I thought it was definitely in the right direction. I, I agree, there's probably some things that are, would look different in one that we did, and one question I had was on, um, the, the numbers allowed for gathering, so, um, how that affects maybe schools and different things, so that might be one area to, uh, to get some clarification on, but, um, but yeah, that ordinance, uh, discussed standing in line in public right of way, um, you know, how many people can wait outside of business and for how long, um, and then a lot of, uh, restrictions on gathering in public and private spaces, so it, I thought it was, uh, really well done, um. So I, and I would agree that, uh, with some of the comments that were made at the general forum the other, the other night, that having an ordinance in Ferguson Township that resembles the one in the borough would be easiest for everyone, so I think even if there's some things that aren't maybe, um, always applicable here, I think, you know, consistency would be, would be the, the main priority. What I was talking about earlier, when Dave gave his report, was, um, looking beyond maybe masking and distancing at some of the other restrictions that we had had in place in March before we had a plethora of cases, so the early shutdowns. Um, and so wondering what the county commissioners would be seeking, and I'm, I'm genuinely curious as to why there aren't any kind of proactive measures being taken prior to the students coming back, beginning with move-in through the following few weeks, when we know that there would be a, a rise in cases, why there weren't any steps taken at the county level to address that proactively like we did back in March, so I'm, I'm really concerned, I think that you know, it might be too late now, I'm not, I'm not sure, but I think that really would have been something to consider, and if the municipal managers, as they meet with Sean Kaufman and the county administrator, can raise some of those concerns, I think if there's time to do something, it would still make sense. You know, looking at, the move-in is staggered for Penn State students on campus. The amount of time that they're allowed at the dorm to move in is really limited, so assuming there's a student with two parents, and they're here for the day, that means they'll be out in town, so they'll be at the big box stores, they'll be in, in restaurants, and so what I would suggest would be some very lean temporary restrictions on capacity in big box stores, so, like, similar to what we had in March, from the beginning of move-in through the first couple of weeks of classes, and maybe limiting dine-in at restaurants. And I don't like these restrictions anymore than anybody else does, but I feel like it's prudent, you know, at this time, and also, you know, one added benefit, I was thinking of doing something like this, would be to give our slow testing system a chance to catch up, and possibly keep a better pace if we were in some sort of, I don't wanna say lockdown, but restrictive mode, maybe closer to like a yellow phase, but not even that stringent. So allow the testing to catch back up a little bit, allow the contact tracing to be a little bit more effective when you have people not mingling quite as much, so. You know, I guess that's kind of what I would put out there is, I would be, I would be supportive of asking, I guess the best way to do it would be of asking Dave in his conversations with the municipal managers, county administrator, and emergency services to seek some kind of tem- very temporary restrictions like this. Not only are Penn State students starting that week, but the State College Area School District is also starting that week, and they'll be in person as well, so, and that's a huge undertaking, what they're doing, so I think those things combined really has to, really has to be addressed, so I'm, I'm, I'm just not even sure if there's time at this point, but that would be my suggestion. I don't think it would make sense in our municipal ordinance, but, because that seems to be a, a longer term strategy, and what I would be suggesting for this would be something much more short-term, just to, uh, give a time to adapt to that population surge. That was all I had on that, so, to, you know, just to go back to the resolution, I absolutely am in favor of this, I think it was really well-written, and I would like to move forward with an ordinance, and possibly then discuss something that Dave could bring to, um, the regional meeting of other proactive measures that we can take.
Thank you.
I think I largely agree with that, uh, and, and support moving, uh, towards an ordinance, uh, while, you know, we possibly, I think we might need to consider some, uh, different things or some differences, just because, um, it's, we are slightly different with respect to population density in different parts and things like that than, uh, the borough, uh, but, um, by and large, uh, sticking to a very similar ordinance, making sure where things make sense, uh, would be something that I would be supportive of.
I have a question, it's Laura from left field, kind of, so Dave Provolka, are we yet included in the so-called community-wide task force that we've been excluded from thus far? Are we yet included in that?
No, but I understand there's gonna be some discussion about that when we meet tomorrow afternoon as a, as a manager's group, I'm not sure exactly what that will all entail, but as of right now, no, there's been no change in the membership of that task force.
And when you're meeting with them tomorrow, can you get, can you get some kind of an idea as to whether they have additional resources that are not available to the rest of the community, because in that press release, they talked about testing and contact tracing, and I'm just wondering, I've been waiting 13 days now for my test results, just wondering if they have some additional ability that the rest of the community does not have, um, that they're gonna be, you know, keeping to themselves and or sharing with the rest of the community. I'm sorry, that's a little off-topic, but it's, it's related. And when you're talking with them, um, I think Lisa's idea is a good one. Can you bring that up to them and see how, how the reception is on that?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, anything else, either on the resolution or drafting of an ordinance by the staff?
Um, I have something else, just in terms of PR. When we're talking about this resolution and ordinance in, to the public, can we make sure that we, talk about how Penn State specifically is asking for this kind of a support as they bring the students back? Because I think that the general public kind of thinks it's the municipalities being, um, you know, heavy-handed as opposed to this being kind of a group effort to help, um, mitigate the effects of the massive influx of students. So can we make sure we emphasize Penn State's urging of these kinds of things, um, as we move forward?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea because President Barron has definitely made the call for the municipalities to help out with this, so.
Exactly. In fact, I think they're pretty much counting on us to do this. That's okay. I just was saying, I think they're pretty much counting on us to do that.
So Theresa's been leading our communication, our crisis communications efforts. So I'll touch base with her and, and make sure that we can work that into the outreach that we move ahead with and, you know, as we prepare the, the draft. I would expect to, although I don't know this to be certain, but that other uh, other regional municipalities, I'll get a better sense of this tomorrow, will be pursuing similar language to what the borough has in place.
That's great. I didn't, I didn't realize that. That's great news.
Yeah, I don't think that it would just be a Ferguson and Borough initiative. I think we'll see College and Patton and, you know, possibly others, you know, Harris or Half Moon or uh, Belfont or whoever, wherever it's appropriate would, would be. And I know Belfont's been talking about uh, an ordinance themselves. So I don't know that it's going to mirror this language, but it'll be likely be in the same spirit.
And then enforcement of this is going to be up to the police department, right?
Well, yes, I mean, I, I think, you know, in, in all likelihood, it would be a common, you know, we would certainly still want to have a very heavy educational and compliance-focused mission, you know, wouldn't be our intention to go in and just start finding people or citing people left and right. The hope is that we could, you know, get, uh, not just businesses and establishments, but also the public at large to be, you know, voluntarily compliant with this. With the understanding that, you know, repeat offenders, or if it's really an egregious violation, we would have the ability to issue citations and be a little more heavy-handed. Um, but I think, and I don't speak for, you know, chief who's on the call, but I think that, that the intent would be for the police department to largely have an educational and compliance-driven role in, in the enforcement of this. And maybe it would be peppered with some spot checking, you know, of these establishments periodically, the ordinance officers, there's, you know, as he is available to do some checks of local businesses, just to make sure that there's nothing that, um, you know, is going on in those establishments that's either prohibiting compliance with the ordinance or discouraging people from complying with the ordinance, meaning our businesses being set up in such a way so that social distancing is impractical or impossible. If so, then that's a problem. Um, are we seeing a lot of kind of a cavalier approach to enforcing the masking requirements? If so, well, that's a problem. But if it's just one individual who happens to be walking around the store with a mask group down there, that's more of an educational opportunity than it is, I think, a, a concern that, you know, the business needs to be fined $300 for or something like that. So it's probably one of those things where, you know, we need to be cognizant of the, you know, the, the letter of the law and the spirit of the law, understanding that they're both critical. We want to have the letter of the law, be supportive and provide the, the framework and the backbone that the police department and the ordinance officer need in order to, you know, so that they actually have some, some leverage in their, in their interactions with folks. But we want it to be, we want the, the, you know, the driving force behind this to be, to get people to be compliant for the sake of being compliant for the pursuit of public health and safety as opposed to the fear of being fined or, or issued a citation.
I can repeat everything Dave said, but he said it well. So there's really no need to do that.
There's just a ditto, I think is good.
So Dave, um, it's Laura. Dave, did you already send out that ADA information to all the businesses?
Or? Yes, it, it went out as an insert with the business needs survey.
Thanks. And, um, so I think, so one thing this ordinance does I, or would do, I think, maybe I'm wrong, is like right now as it is, um, like if you're in a business and they're not, um, enforcing the mask requirement, um, you have to get the manager to call the police in order to respond. But in, if this, if this ordinance would be enacted, as we're talking about it, this would then give patrons of that business also the ability to call the police. Is that right or no?
I, I believe that's correct. I'm just scanning the ordinance right now to see if I could find the specific citation.
And then you also talked about like fining the business, but you could, but I think in the ordinance, it also talks about individuals as well, right?
So like, so there's, I'm sorry. Uh, there are provisions for fining, um, civil citation, civil, civil fines to be administered to a person or individual found to have violated the mandatory provisions of the ordinance. Uh, property owner in the case of owner occupied property or tenants of a rental property where a violation is found. There's a, there's a provision in there for citation to be levied against those individuals. And then there's also provisions that relate to businesses and proprietors of establishments too.
Sorry. So in there, yes, if somebody's in a business, an individual could call for assistance.
Oh, sure. Yes. I believe that the, I, I believe that the, um, provisions of the ordinance, I mean, the obligations of the ordinance and, and concerns about violations can be forwarded by any, any resident citizen, individual patron.
Thank you. Thank you to the police for being willing to do this because people are really crazy about this thing and get violent and it's very scary. And so thank you for being there to help us manage that situation.
And that's what this is a challenging thing because I think you've got about 50% of the population, they're firm believers of the mask, 50%. Uh, the other side that don't believe in the masks and trying to use the education aspect of it, I think is going to be the most important part because I really don't look forward to causing any type of, or getting into any type of confrontation with somebody over a mask.
I don't blame you. It's really scary.
Okay, anything else? Seeing none, we'll start with a vote on the resolution. We already have a motion, so.
This is presented as resolution 2020 dash 25. Mr. Mitra?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Dinini?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
And then if someone wants to make a motion concerning an ordinance, or it would be a motion to have staff prepare an ordinance for us to, uh, consider at the next meeting.
Hi Laura, I move that we direct staff to prepare an ordinance for consideration at our next meeting regarding masking.
Patty seconds.
Okay, motion and a second and a further discussion.
Can I add and compliance with, um, social distancing and other considerations?
Right. Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Uh, next on the agenda is, uh, the yards at Old State, which is the cottages at State College Plan, Final Planned Residential Development Plan Amendment.
I think I'll ask Jenna to introduce this topic. Excuse me.
State College Apartments has submitted a request for amendments to their approved final PRD and to include modifications to the patios and sidewalks as shown in the highlighted red outline on sheet four of the plan as well as an updated lighting plan, which is sheet 19. Both of those sheets are included with the agenda. Uh, the applicant is not increasing impervious coverage and the town and township staff reviewed the requested, requested modifications and is recommending approval pending any outstanding comments on the lighting plan review from Scott Brown. He has completed that review as of, I think it was Friday of last week and is in compliance with our ordinances as well.
Have questions, Steve, Laura. When Scott Brown, you've used that, do we bill that to the Toll Brothers?
That's, um, those review fees are charged, uh, to an escrow account that's established by the developer.
We somehow get back our time for our own staff reviewing that for them again and again and again?
We have provisions in place for review fees to be recuperated by the, that are incurred by the township engineer for certain reviews. Development reviews conducted by the planning director or community planner or zoning officer are not, uh, recovered by the township.
Is that something we have control to change or is that just the way of the state?
No, you can, you can change it. You can, um, incorporate in your schedule of fees. You know, time assessed to a, an applicant for development for, um, generally all time incurred, uh, by staff to conduct their planned reviews.
I think that that would be good for us to do. Can we consider that this year when we review our schedule of fees?
You can.
Thanks. Kind of off topic, but really relevant when it comes to this particular thing. Thanks.
Sure.
Any other comments or questions? In that case, would someone care to make a motion?
This is Lisa. I'll move that the Board of Supervisors approve the amendment to the cottages at State College. Final Planned Residential Development Plan pending outstanding staff comments.
Second to present it.
Okay, motion and a second. Any other comments we board? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is a Ferguson Township Police Department Response Report. As that goes to the chiefs.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, at our July 6th meeting, the board directed me to prepare a report addressing specific police activities. Attached to the agenda is a copy of that report. I'm going to share my screen and, uh, kind of go page by page summarize things a little bit. Can everybody see that? I have, I have too many screens open, so I want to make sure I'm showing the right thing there. So page one kind of identifies our, our, our training. We have three levels of training. We have state requirements, regional needs and department needs. All municipal police officers are certified under the Municipal Police Officer Education and Training Commission. Uh, the commission requires police officers to maintain first aid, CPR and firearms qualifications. In addition to that, officers must attend 12 hours of continuing education credits every year. Three of those credits must come from a legal update course that's developed by the commission. The nine other credits can come from courses that are developed by the commission or approved by the commission. The commission approved or the, the commission developed courses are delivered, uh, through online learning. Uh, examples of some of those, uh, courses, personal leadership, LGBTQ plus victims responding to victims with disabilities and procedural justice and de-escalation techniques. The second level is regional needs. Every year, the chiefs of police from the county police departments meet and identify needs, uh, for all county police departments. Some examples of some of those topics include autism, diversity, mental health, crisis intervention, surviving verbal conflict, de-escalation, investigating hate crimes and sexual assault, domestic violence updates. The next level is department-specific training. At this level, we're dealing with AED, automatic external defibrillators, Narcan, that's the drug that we use to administer for somebody that's experiencing an opioid overdose and oxygen. We also conduct use of force training numerous times a year. Each session starts with a, um, review of policy, laws and case laws, and it covers, as I said, a wide variety of topics. The training curriculum for the use of force is approved by me, our instructors. For this are in-house instructors. Each of the instructors goes to a state or nationally recognized training facility or entity. Uh, sometimes it's a Pennsylvania State Police Taser or a pressure point control tactics. We train officers on policy, um, use of force, uh, care and custody of arrestees, emergency driving pursuit, uh, bias-based policing. Not only does accreditation require this, but it's also quite frankly, best practices for law enforcement. We also have professional development courses. Those are courses, uh, for say, for instance, crime scene processing, child safety seat installation inspection, crash reconstructionist, internal affairs, kind of list goes on and on with that. For 2020, we have a couple of courses that we have pending that they might change a little bit with the COVID restrictions. Uh, one of them is ICAT, Integrating Communications Tactics, Integrating Communications and Tactics. And the other one is a officer wellness peer-to-peer support system. On the next page, it's kind of an overview of the CIT training agenda. CIT was started in Center County in 2011. It was based on the Memphis model that was developed in Memphis. It was assembled by mental health professionals, National Alliance of Mental Health Institute and Police. Our crisis intervention coordinator is doing a presentation before the board or State College Borough Council tomorrow night at their regular meeting. And if that's something that our board would like, I can certainly arrange that. So you have a, a, a full understanding of the program and the training. On the next page, kind of goes over the, the mental health calls, the mental health calls that we respond to. I mean, quite frankly, some of them, we know when we get them, they're mental health. Other ones start out as, as a crash, a burglary, a loud music complaint. And when the officer gets there, they can quickly recognize that somebody's experiencing a mental health crisis. De-escalation is something that officers, it doesn't even have to be a mental health call. It's something that officers do every day, whether, once again, whether it's dealing with roommate disputes, domestic violence, crimes where you're dealing with not only the, the aggressor, but you're also dealing with the victim. As you say, I kind of give a breakdown of some of the calls that we've had over the last couple of years. And I think I, one of, one of the questions I was asked is to, uh, maybe talk about some of the bigger issues that we kind of experienced with this. And, and one of the ones I won't get through all, um, we, we have an individual that recently moved back to the township a couple of months ago. And since that individual has been back, living back in a township, they have called the 911 center over 20 times. They have sent me 92 emails, uh, left me 13 voicemail messages. Each voicemail message is four minutes and 59 seconds long. That's all our voicemail system will record. And this doesn't, uh, really cover the amount of times that she actually gets through and speaks to me a week. This individual has services in place. Quite frankly, she wants to terminate her services, mental health services. And I fear that quite frankly, that's something that'll only escalate in more calls, more emails and everything else to us. We switch to the next page. It kind of goes to our ambulance calls. For ambulance calls and said officers can do something as little as, uh, help, help the victim, you know, come up with a plan to secure the residence, you know, gather personal belongings, even, um, get medications from inside the residence, get information about their, uh, medical history. They can administer oxygen all the way up to, as I said, life-saving measures, CPR, AED. There's kind of a, a breakdown of the information about the stats, the information, EMS calls. One, one of the interesting things that, you know, I, I talked to a center life, like I, I wasn't completely aware of some of the stats here, but you know, with a chain of survival, you know, includes, includes early notification, early CPR, early defibrillation in advance. Includes early notification, early CPR, early defibrillation and advanced care according to. Clem's Center Life Link EMS, um defibrillator pads are. Attached to the patient ninety percent of the time by police department personnel. Thus, starting the, you know, early defibrillation part of that. And so far this year, um there have been. Add a, you know, five patients who were in cardiac, cardiac arrest and resuscitated. Four of those have been discharged from the hospital. That's not just Ferguson Township. That's, that's the center region. State College, Patton Township and us. Sliding to the next page, domestic violence calls. Kind of a breakdown on our calls, both arrest and non-arrest. State law mandates us, the state law mandates arrest in certain cases requires, requires us to provide mandatory victim notification. The services that include shelter, protection from abuse orders, available counseling. As well as uh post-arrest notification. The county has a uh domestic violence protocol, countywide protocol. Component of that protocol is a lethality assessment. The officer sits down with the uh victim of the domestic, asks a series of questions and depending on the victim's answer. Those responses may require the officer to immediately notify center safe, center safe and. Develop a safety plan for the victim. Additionally, the State College Police Department, along with Center Safe, received a grant many years in a row now. For um victim-centered intense case management unit. Essentially, the unit centralizes and, and coordinates responses to domestic violence. After we make an arrest in a domestic violence, the information from that arrest is not only forwarded to the district attorney's office. But it's also forwarded to this unit. And once again, this unit helps develop plans for them for safety. It kind of helped them through the court process and getting different documents that they need. They also provide training to all the officers. Next page kind of covers our arrest stats. This is uh breakdown by race. This is something that I submitted to the board. I think it was back in. February, March, so nothing really new on that. List. And then we go back into um. Contact and, you know, contacts and use of force, kind of breaks down the number of contacts that we have. How many of those result in arrest and how many times we use force? And one of the important things to remember is we track force in seventeen categories and this list of use of force. Starts at um handcuffing. Most places don't really track use of force until it gets higher up. We started use of force that we started handcuffing and, and look at that all the way up. We have been, the department has been involved in uh two police shootings in our history. In February of nineteen ninety-four, uh officers from Patton and Ferguson responded to a trailer park. In Patton Township, the gentleman at the uh trailer uh called nine-one-one and reported that um he had just killed his family. His officers were approaching that residence. Um, individual came out onto the street. They could see a handgun in him, in his hand. They verbally challenged him and uh at one point in time he raised a handgun and then he was shot. And the man survived. He was subsequently charged and found guilty, sentenced to prison. Second shooting was uh July of two thousand and eight. A man armed with a shotgun robbed a car dealership in a Belfon area. During that uh robbery, he had made reference to the Christian uh radio station here in Ferguson Township. Officers went to the uh radio station to warn them about this gentleman. Then a short period of time, the uh man arrived in his Ford Bronco. Officers tried to speak with him. That didn't work, so he actually drove off. Crashed into two of our police cars, unoccupied police cars. And began firing a shotgun out the window of his vehicle. Um, officers returned fire and he died at the scene. And on the next page, it kind of goes over the uh use of force categories that we track. And then from that point, it just goes into the summary of our use of force incidents beginning in twenty eighteen. To current, the problem is I, I go back too far. Our new RMS system doesn't have the same. Is this, the, the same information between the two, so trying to import one from the other isn't working as well. So I had to read an awful lot of reports to verify this information and come up with it. So that's a summary of that. Um, and you'll see as you page down through. You'll see, as I said, you'll see handcuffing, um depending on, depending on the charge. You may not see a charge. There may be, you know, something else involved with it. And the other thing, you go back too far is interesting is expungements. Things are wiped off and we have no um information about the victim and their. I'm sorry, not the victim, the defendant. So, anybody has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
Yeah, there any questions for the chief? Uh, if so, just speak up because uh again with the. Sharing, I don't see everybody.
Looks like present it as a question?
Yeah, I have a s- series of questions, but I'll ask uh some of the main ones. So. With respect to the training, um. You, I saw that there was a de-escalation thing and I apologize, this is uh a lot of information for me to. Read and remember, so it might be in the report and I might ask you again and just point out that. And uh I'm getting uh there with age, so I might have forgotten things. So, having said that, so with respect to the de-escalation training. Can you give me an idea of uh what uh training our officers have had? How many of them? How many hours or what, you know, do they have, at what frequency, things like that? So I'm looking for that information.
The, the training as said, you know, some of it, some of the, one of the classes we talked about in here is, is more or less something called. Uh, surviving verbal judo. Um, that, that's essentially de-escalation where you talk about your communication skills. That, that was a four-hour block um at the county level. But it's also incorporated in um training scenarios that we do. We have. Semunition rounds, which is, which are essentially paintball rounds. We also have airsoft. Type tools where, as I said, you know, the officers will have a scenario. That they go through where they're working, their verbal de-escalation, talk to the person, talk to person down. And you know, as I said, you know, encourage voluntary compliance. The other one too is, as I said, uh, you know, through CIT. Uh, CIT was a forty-plus hour course. I can't give you an exact number of hours are devoted to de-escalation. Specific to that class, but I know at the end. There's a scenario based with that that everybody has to go through and you practice those skills and techniques that you learn. So, so I mean, essentially we do de-escalation every year. You know, to say, to say that it's, it's, it's incorporated in other things for, for me to say it's exactly eight hours. I, I, I can't, I can't tell you that specifically.
No, I wasn't looking for that. And just another part of the question was, uh, everybody goes through this every year or?
Yes. Yeah, cr- crisis intervention. You go through that forty-hour course, but then you also receive updates every year. It's part of that.
Yeah, and uh then i- it, so the other thing I was interested in is uh when you. Sort of uh hire people. In the interview and so on, if, uh, you know, in broad brushes, what are, you know, qualities you're looking for?
Realistically, you're looking for um somebody, you know, when we do interviews, we do a video interview. Essentially, we show them a scenario of an incident. And. They don't have to provide the right information for that video, for that video interview, because I mean, that's something that you can teach in training. But what you're looking for is integrity. A big part of that is maybe there's a scenario where an officer is stealing something. At a scene, so, so you ask them questions, you know, what would you do? How, how would you handle this? And it's not something that I, I expect, you know, somebody who hasn't been in law enforcement to, hey, you reported to your supervisor. If your supervisor doesn't do anything. You keep reporting it up the chain. What we're looking for is that person that sit there and go, oh heck no, I would not tolerate that. I would turn them in and it'll hurt. Or, yeah, I said, you know, a lot of it is scenario-based. You can also talk, you know, in that you, you can get to know people and how they, you know, their level of communication and comfort in, in dealing with people.
Sorry, I muted myself. Yeah, for the uh, the other aspect I wanted to know is I, I have read the. Policy discipline document that was uh sent out and um. But I had some um uh questions on, on that is that um. There is, uh, there are some parts which says that, well, everything is um, is kept. Secret and uh, and so on. A- and that's the part that I want to probe in. In, in a way, um, building trust with the community. Uh, would require us to be as transparent as possible. Um. And we are at the end of the day a public um sort of body or an extension of a public body. And so. Why are those there and um what can we reasonably share and what do you think we absolutely must keep private?
To me, I missed it to beginning, which policy you were talking about you cut out, so I did not hear which policy.
Uh, so this is the police discipline document.
Okay, okay, gotcha. Okay. Yep, I mean, what, what we could do with that is, as I said, I mean, that's something that. At the, what I've been looking at is at the end of the year, I see a lot of departments kind of do a uh year-end review type. Situation where they will report. An overview of what, of what complaints have come in. Whether they were founded, unfounded, sustained or not sustained and more or less given overview of. Of that information. Um, whether, whether we would release a police officer's name, I, I, yeah, I don't see. That I would do something like that.
Okay, um, yeah, because that's what, um. You know, that's sort of part of the bigger problem, which is that there is an officer who does something. And um, and that information is hidden. Uh, I mean, I know, as you know, the state is uh perhaps uh. Doing things by which we will know of cases where, uh, you know, the, the most egregious cases. Before, when you're hiring someone, but what this does is it essentially. Prevents us from identifying the problem cases because before they become a George Floyd problem case. And there were signs, uh, a- and in this case, I don't know whether those were made public or not, but there were signs of a person. Uh, having these complaints. Now, if all of that is just kept totally secret and nobody knows anything, um. First of all, we don't know. And second of all, what that results in is that. Even if they are fired from here, they go somewhere else and they get hired. And this is a systemic problem in the system and by. Uh, I don't know what the solution is. Uh, and I will come back to this in the future, but I just, you know, wanted to put that on the board and find out your thoughts and we'll go from there.
We, we, we share our discipline records with departments that um are looking to hire. I can say that I have honestly, I used to do background investigations. And I have had departments that would not share information about officers. Currently, you know, as I said, with, with, you know, the internet and, and different things, there's certain ways, certain, you know, things that you can do for, on my end. That I know that I can, that I can search and, and look for um activity. And, and I was gonna say, it's actually interesting how, you know, when, when you, when you talk about the George Floyd incident, I have heard. You said there were lots of complaints filed against the officer, but I haven't heard specifically what they were. So I, I don't know if he was truly a, a, a problem officer. I'm gonna guess that's a pretty, that's an, that's a high number. But when I was talking earlier about that individual who. Calls the nine-one-one center so much and calls us on a regular basis. That if she doesn't get the answer she wants, she immediately files a complaint. So it turns out that it's, it's not founded. But if I said to you, well, gee, she's called in thirteen complaints about police. There, there's a different, as I said, there, there's a different level with that than there is, you know, as I said, something that is truly, truly an issue. And I'll be honest too, as I said, I, I have, I have no desire to work with anybody. That is going to be a repetitive problem. I think, I think in some of the emails I shared with you. A, a majority of our complaints over the last couple of years have actually um come from internal sources. Where people saw something or thought that they saw something that wasn't right and reported it. So, so as I said, so you know, you're dealing with, you know, culture there to the culture of the organization. And if you have people that aren't willing to tolerate that or willing to stand up if they see something, that's what we want.
No, I was a- absolutely talking about uh. Releasing the information about founded cases.
Yeah.
It, because otherwise we are uh essentially hiding. You know, you, you, people talk about bad apples. The whole system is now hiding bad apples. Uh, and you know, when I go to a football game in a Penn State, um. You know, Penn State uh football game. Uh, I have the back of my mind. Uh, I don't know, you know, I, I, I don't have. That trust in the uh, in the State College Police Department because there is one person there. Who fired and killed a colored person. And. You, you know, the next time it could be me. Uh, and we don't know. So, so this creates this mistrust between. Police and uh, and society, if we want to cover up um incidents. Which were founded, um, where uh someone did something wrong. So that's where I'm sort of coming from on this.
In my case too, the other thing too is if we have somebody that files a complaint, um, they are notified of the outcome. Of, of the investigation, um, and what discipline is administered.
Okay, th- those were the major uh points set out. Yeah.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions or comments for the chief on the report?
Hi, Steve, it's Laura. I just have one question to clarify. Chief, did you say you already do? The synopsis of disciplinary action things or you're going to do that in the future?
It's something that when I look at other jurisdictions, I look at their annual report and uh it's, it's something that they've included in theirs. And as I say, I have no opposition to. In uh including it at ours.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And then also just for direction, is the board interested in hearing from, you know, our, our crisis intervention? Coordinator to see if, you know, she wants to do something uh for the board? Anybody interested?
Yeah, I'm interested.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I, I would be interested, chief.
Okay. I'll get something scheduled.
Anything else? Well, thanks for a uh. Thorough report and I think we'll probably be having discussions and I, I think it would be good to. To get a, a better feel for the crisis intervention and that's sort of how that's handled, so. It's a good idea. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks for all the work on that report.
Yeah, thank you, chief.
Thank, thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is fire code and safety regulations report.
Thank you. I'll get it started and then I'll, I'll let Chris uh clear his throat and then I'll kick it right back over to him. Uh, there's a couple of things that are provided with your agenda packet. That were compiled in order to maybe help guide the discussion for this report. The request was to uh for staff to, to provide a report on the reg- regulations of, of recreational fires, open burning. Burn barrels, recreational smokers, et cetera, uh within the township. And so one of the, the, the. And so one of the, the, the main attachments that I would like to draw your attention to is chapter seven of the property maintenance code. And this was the, uh, version of the property maintenance code that was adopted regionally, all the participants in the center region code administrations program, for, for building code enforcement. And the, the latest generation of this was just enacted in 2017. Uh, so some of you were on the board then, others were not. But this is, uh, with, with this update, with this enactment, there really wasn't many changes that were made to chapter seven per se, the fire safety requirements. But in that chapter, you'll find, um, all of the specific building construction code provisions that apply with regard to fire protection. But there's also, if I can call your attention all the way down to the highlighted section, which is page eight of 11, some language relative to open burning, when a permit is required, when it's not required. So, uh, that's, that's the first, uh, the main attachment. The second attachment that you'll see is a, um, report that was provided by Walt Schneider, Center Region Code Director, um, of open burning permits issued by zoning district for roughly a two and a half year period, 2018, 2019, and then, you know, sort of to date in 2020. So you'll see just kind of at a glance that generally speaking, codes will issue one to four permits on average per year in Ferguson Township and various zoning districts. There are some outliers, 2018 commercial had 35 open burn permits. I'm not really, I didn't really drive into the outliers to see what the, um, uh, what the motivation was behind those or what, anything, anything particularly unique about those years of those zoning districts that may stand out, but far and away, uh, majority zoning districts in the township only see one to a few, uh, open burn permits that are issued per year. And the last attachment, which chief will get into a little bit, is to clarify the provisions of Pennsylvania Act 101, which is the, um, you know, kind of the governing legislation, the state preemptive legislation for, uh, treatment of, of recycling materials and mandated communities with regard to leaf collection. So this is, we are an act 101 mandated municipality, so we need to provide, um, a mechanism for residents to dispose of or get rid of their leaves that is not burning. Chief's gonna talk a little bit about that momentarily. But essentially, if the concern from the board was to get a sense of what we regulate for recreational fires, there are very few regulations that are currently in place in Ferguson Township, provided that recreational fire pit is 25 feet or more away from a, a, a structure or that, uh, the conditions that are in place at the time of that recreational fire wouldn't facilitate the spread within 25 feet of a structure. So most commonly you'll see, of course, recreational fires take place after hours at night when Center Region Code Administration, who's tasked with the enforcement of the property maintenance code, would not necessarily be, um, staffed or out patrolling. In those instances, I believe typically the police department would get called. We would send an officer out there to investigate it, but, um, you know, provided that they were compliant with the property maintenance code, we don't have any restrictions beyond that. Open burn permits, uh, you could see where those are required. So if there's something like a burn barrel, uh, or clearly not being used for recreational purposes as defined in that as exception in that provision, then that's something that the individual, the property owner would be expected to get a burn permit for. Or they, there's penalties that are in the property maintenance code if they're found to not have that permit in place. Really, I thought that this, I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Albright and ask him to say a few words about act 101 and add anything that I may have overlooked. But I wanted to keep the presentation sort of, you know, kind of high level and then let you all as the board or anybody from the public ask any questions and we can, I can respond to what I'm a- able to respond to now or get answers since nobody here, from, nobody here this evening is from Center Region Code Administration. But Chris, do you wanna pick up?
Yeah, I'll add a little bit. I, I had the pleasure of reading, uh, the municipal waste planning recycling act. Great reading. Chapter 15 covers, yeah, I said, uh, reducing recycling and, uh, waste. And, uh, one of the interesting things through that was they actually have different breakdowns municipalities with the burden ordinance. You know, do this municipalities without a burn ordinance do this, uh, for burning leaves specifically. You know, DEP is established under best practices that, uh, burning leaves is not an acceptable form of recycling leaves. So I mean, quite frankly, near this, neither the state nor the township explicitly prohibit leaf burning. Um, and his date covered the fire code and he covered the enforcement end of it. So I mean, that's what to me it looks like, you know, if we're, if we're looking for different things, different ideas, definitely a, uh, leaf burning ordinance is, uh, something that should be looked at.
So I know there was some concern that was raised by the board about, um, other sort of non-typical recreational fires like smokers and things like that. Wouldn't be considered as a requirement for an individual who has a residential smoker to get an open burn permit wouldn't really be considered an, an open flame or recreational fire. So we don't have any provisions in our ordinances or in the property maintenance code that would restrict or govern the use of residential smokers. I just wanted to clarify that point too.
And then also building on that, I had the opportunity to speak to code and fire officials today. And essentially a smoker is considered an appliance as far as their, or, you know, their consideration.
Um, I have a question. So in something that was just in our agenda packet tonight, it talked about, um, you know, us giving leeway to businesses wanting during COVID to spill out into the, um, parking lots, if you will, et cetera. But one of the things it said, it referred to a nuisance ordinance. And it said specifically referring to noise, lighting or odor. So if somebody had a smoker, couldn't that technically fall under the odor of a nuisance?
It could. You could. I mean, there's, there's nothing that would prohibit the township from enacting more restrictive regulations on the use of residential smokers or recreational fires. We just don't have anything in place right now. We do have ordinances relative to other nuisances like noise and light.
Ask a question for clarification also. So we have some open burn regulations through code. But our, because code isn't available all the time, our police do enforce those, correct?
Yes.
So if somebody is called to an open barrel burn and the person doesn't have a permit, our police can enforce that.
Once again, I think it's gonna depend on that open barrel burn. I mean, is it, is it a recreational fire? Is it being used for cooking? Is it just that somebody's using it for a lack of a better term as a device for smoking? I mean, I was gonna say, there's a, there's a whole bunch of variables that I can't give you a blanket answer for.
Okay, so if we wanted to prohibit open burning in our, in the residential districts, could we do that? And I don't mean recreational fires. I'm talking about open burns, which would be a burn barrel, which yes, I realize there's some question about when that's recreational and when it isn't, but can we regulate by zoning district is my question, I guess.
Um, I think you could. Let me just qualify that by saying I'm not a hundred percent certain, but I don't see why you would not be able to enact certain restrictions. We do so with other nuisance ordinances, as you know. So noise, for example, has different expectations or there's different standards of, I guess, reasonability that apply to commercial industrial that don't apply, that apply differently to residential. So, you know, maybe even if it were something as broad as, you know, residential districts, like you just described, I don't, I don't think there would be anything inherently, um, invalid about, about that ordinance or about that regulation. I, I would assume you can, but I'll reserve the right to change my answer if I look into it and find something else.
And we would enact an ordinance to do that, not just through the property code, right?
Um, that is proper. Well, the property code, I should say, is an ordinance. I mean, it's, it's established by ordinance. So I think, you know, it's kind of, it depends on how you define it. But I don't think we would need to amend the property maintenance code to say that, you know, open burn permits will not be issued in residential zoning districts in Ferguson Township. I think you could do that by ordinance. So let me back up. If you go to, which I didn't include and just realizing now, maybe I should have, I apologize. But the, the, the provisions that apply in our zone, in our ordinance, excuse me, to fire prevention, fire protection, oh no, I'm sorry. Code enforcement, you'll see, uh, in that, under part three, there are amendments to the building safety and property maintenance code. That's, um, chapter five, section 503. So in that, there's a series of 15 provisions, either alterations, deletions or additions that apply specifically in Ferguson Township. So my initial response, again, subject to change on further research would be if the board were interested in implementing restrictions on open burning in residential districts, that the mechanism to do that would be via an amendment to chapter five of the code of ordinances, which would apply to the property maintenance code.
And in that, we could also, we could also say something like restrict recreational fires to be not including burn barrels to make it more clear in enforcement. So, so now as it is, it's hazy, it's fuzzy and burn barrels sometimes are burn barrels and sometime are recreational fires, but we could use language. A question, could we use language to clarify that recreational fires do not include fires and burn barrels? Question?
Yeah, I, I believe, yeah, I believe the board is enabled to legislate in whatever manner you, you deem appropriate, whatever you define a nuisance would be in this regard. You know, chief's point about, um, burn barrels used as smokers, that's kind of a new concept to me. But one of the more recent complaints that I heard, uh, from a, 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 about a property owner that was using it just for that was somebody who was trying to get rid of mosquitoes on their, in their pasture by using a burn barrel to essentially smoke them out. So that does, that does take place. So they've got utility beyond burning, obviously burning refuse and garbage or leaves or things like that, that, you know, the board may deem nuisance.
Yeah, that's not, first, that's, does not sound efficient at all, but okay. But that's also not going to be happening in a residential district either. That's a pasture is not in, in a residential district.
Most often, that's correct.
I just, I think that it's really, um, it seems really excessive that we have leaf and brush collection all the time. And that folks in residential areas are, I don't know, doing open burning. It doesn't seem conducive to a residential kind of a setting. I think obviously it's come up a lot as being a nuisance in those kinds of situations. So I personally would like to try to address that. Specifically in residential areas, not in RA and RR. Even though RR is actually residential, we don't really think of it that way, unfortunately. And I think it would be too difficult to try to regulate by zoning district and then by parcel size. Um, I think that that would be just too, way too cumbersome. But I personally would like to see the definition of recreational fire exclude burn barrels. And I personally would like to see open burns being not, not having not, um, not allowed in residential areas.
I do think, uh, you know, even though it would be cumbersome to do it by parcel size, you could definitely do a distance from the property line restriction.
True, true. Yeah, I was looking at that with the recreational fires too. I think some, is it in there 15 feet or something from a structure?
25.
Okay. I thought I saw 15 in there. I think Steve, that that's a really good idea. Um, distance from the property line.
So this has brought up an issue that maybe you weren't expecting. And I, I did talk to Dave and Chris. I just wanna make sure that we're, we're still, um, accurate and that is, that we're very successful in getting recycling grants for leaf collection and brush collection equipment. And every year, every other year, when I fill out an application, I have to check a box. Does your municipality have an ordinance that regulates the burning of waste? And I thought I've been doing it right, but I think I need to update it, um, if nothing else. And then if yes, what items, if any, can be burned in your municipality? And will the burning ordinance be updated? And I know that, um, chief had some discussions with Joe DelGrippe, who manages the recycling program for the state. So I guess my question is while you're doing whatever it is you're gonna do, is there anything we need to do to make sure that we're updated or tight in terms of whatever ordinances we have to have in place to continue to get grants for recycling equipment?
Yeah, I think if we're looking into this, you definitely wanna consider that as well, make sure that that is up to date.
I, I would certainly argue that our ordinance language is defensible from a position of arguing that we do not permit burning of leaves, um, without a permit. But I think to Dave's point, we could make that clearer in any ordinance amendment to explicitly prohibit that kind of activity.
I think they might be specifically looking for it in the future, based on some discussions we've had with them now. So it'll be, I just think it would be helpful if it's an opportunity and we're gonna do something to get that language in there.
Sounds good to me. Anything that makes this more clear and enforceable is great. Um, also I'm questioning, so I understand a lot of people have smokers, but I've also done a little research and there are differences. There are like backyard household sized smokers and then there's like commercial sized smokers. And my opinion is that a commercial sized smoker is not supposed to be operated in a residential district. It's supposed to be operated in a commercial district at a commercial place of business. Um, so I don't know if that needs to be clarified, perhaps it does. Um, I don't know what the exact parameters are that makes one commercial and one not. Um, but it seemed, seemed like there was a distinction as I was doing a little bit of research on the internet. So I think it's fine and appropriate for like a grill or a smoker that's used in a house, like at a household level to be in residential districts. But I would like to see if we can make sure that these commercial size types of things are not being used in residential districts. Do you think that that's possible to make a distinction like that? Because it's really not an appropriate use for the zoning district.
I, I don't know.
There's residential smokers that are the size of an outhouse.
Oh my God.
So I didn't know if you're thinking a residential one would just be like a small grill.
Yeah.
So might depend on how much meat this person smokes.
Well, maybe the property line is the way to go with this. What do you think, Steve? Is that something that's possible?
I think that would be the most clear cut way if, uh, you know, you can say a specific thing. I think in terms of smokers, you know, we'd have to do some more research on what, what exactly is considered commercial and whether those are used for resident, you know, residential uses or something.
I guess, but Dave Modricar is saying that there's really massive quote residential use smokers, which is really bizarre, but okay.
Yeah, I know my neighbor had one years ago before he moved away that was, like Dave said, the size of an outhouse that he had built in his backyard.
And there's one 500 feet away from me. That's why I'm.
Oh my. I'm really, it's, I'm, I'm not interested in regulating people's personal behaviors, but when it becomes a nuisance to others, I think that that's a problem. And so I'm just really trying to address that. So perhaps then, that, I think that when you have nuisance law, it's really hard because though. Because though there's, I mean, with lights, we have certain regulations they have to be compliant with. With noise, there's a certain decibel. But with odor, how is that something that we could regulate via nuisance?
Yes, I, I think you hit the nail on the head with that statement.
Well, I think there's something to be said about particularly um, with fires and fire pits. In the sense that um, your windows and your siding, if you're needing to power wash it. Because there's so much smoke generated, that's really a nuisance. So I think you could somehow.
I mean, nuisance ordinances are typically, even when they're very objectively defined. Um, oftentimes in the eye of the beholder. And it's difficult for the township to sometimes broker. Uh, what maybe is offensive to one person and is not offensive to another person. Um, we try to do that to the degree we can, as Mr. Nene just highlighted, with decibel levels for our noise ordinance. Or with um, you know, foot candle levels for our lighting ordinance. And that gives us some objective measure. Um, in my experience with enforcement of nuisance ordinances as they make their way through the process of review and appeal. Uh, that's typically what the magistrate wants to be able to, to point to is some objective measure. Uh, that demonstrates that the person accused is in fact in violation of an ordinance. So they have tended to not side with the township historically, or in, in my experience with other municipalities as well. When it comes to uh, you know, the, the, the more subjective language of, you know, well, it's, you know, considered. Unreasonably offensive to some person or reasonably offensive to some person. Um, because there's just a lot of room for interpretation there. And it can be very easily argued by the accused that, you know, whatever he or she is doing with respect to noise, lighting, odor, whatever. Uh, would not be considered, should not be considered offensive in that respect. So I'm always gonna advocate for objective standards. If it's something like distance from property line, uh, is, is the case for recreational fires, distance from a structure. Those are things that are measurable, that are quantifiable, that we could take to the magistrate and say, here's our, you know, on appeal. And say, this is why we cited this individual, because he or she had, you know, you name it within a certain, you know, violation of our ordinance. And we've given them an opportunity to correct that. They refused to, so we're moving ahead with the next step with citation. Much like, you know, we talked about with the COVID ordinance. We also, our, our first attempt is compliance with these issues too, as you all know. Whether it be noise, whether it be lighting, whether it be other nuisances, um, you know. Frequently, in my experience, these problems can be ameliorated simply by requesting the person who's, you know. That, that the person who's being alleged to have violated, whatever is, who's at issue, just simply requesting that they change. Oftentimes, and certainly not always, but oftentimes, it's a matter of just, you know, true ignorance on the part of the individual. That's causing the nuisance. He or she didn't realize it was a problem to somebody else. Simply uh, being approached by the neighbor, or if necessary, by the township. To correct that situation is sometimes all that it takes. And it doesn't even have to go on to a fine or a citation or anything more punitive. So I, I'm always going to favor the objective over the subjective. If the board's interested in um, enacting further restrictions or regulations of recreational fires or open burning. Or burn barrels or recreational smokers. Um, I think we'd have to do a little more research in terms of what exactly that might mean. Do we have the resources to do enforcement on those? Does the board want police officers on a Saturday night to be going out and investigating recreational fires on the west end of the township? Or do, I mean, is that something that you feel that other time ought to be spent prioritized in another manner? So these, I mean, these are real questions. Um, I'm not suggesting that the answer is one or the other. But if you're considering enacting more restrictive regulations. You ought to also be considering what that does from an enforcement standpoint and from a resource allocation standpoint. Because we've only got, you know, so many officers that are out on the street. And if it's a, you know, football weekend, or if it's a time, you know, it's a night during the, the year that. You might get a lot of recreational fires or a lot of parties going on out in a certain end of the township. But there's also activity uh, going on at another end. It's just a matter of how you wanna allocate staffing and resources for those kinds of things. We could certainly.
I think that is a good point, but I think the problem now is the police are getting called and the regulations are too fuzzy. Or they are like not in place in a way that they can enforce. So I think it's actually, if we get some clarity, um, that they're gonna have less time spent. In dealing with these kinds of things.
I, I don't know that I would necessarily characterize it as there's a lot of calls that the police get that they're going out and investigating. That they don't know what to enforce or whether they can enforce. Um, oftentimes, and Chief, you correct me if I'm wrong on this, it's a recreational fire. That meets the provisions that are laid out by the property maintenance code, so there's no enforcement action to take. It's not a matter of ambiguity or unclarity in the ordinance. It's just it meets the standards.
I don't know. Okay, so from my own personal experience, I have a neighbor that has had someone call the police on them. And it was definitely a question like, well, sort of this, sort of that, maybe this, maybe that. So um, I don't know, through my, my experience, it's, it's seems to be a little bit more confusing than that. But um, maybe not.
I'm, I'm not arguing yes or no. I'm just telling you things you, you ought to be considerate of if you're considering uh, more restrictive regulations.
Sure, I agree. And I think that like something that is a nuisance to people, stuff definitely should be addressed. Um, I've personally experienced it. I'm not suggesting that RR should be included in this though. Because like you said, a lot of the west end of the township, it's the culture. That's something that, you know, is going to go on and it would probably be a waste of resources. But in residential districts, I think that it's pretty outdated to be allowing open burns. So I think we've got this service that all the taxpayers pay for. And people should, should use it and not really create additional air pollution and provide a nuisance to their neighbors. But it's my, my perspective. So I guess I would be interested in finding out if we can regulate open burns by zoning district. If we can include barrel, exclude barrel burns from recreational fire definition. Um, and if we can look at um, regulating smokers. That are appliances, I guess, by um, distance from property line. To try to mitigate some of the nuisance that they provide. And I wondered, Dave Modricar, uh, you said you've got a situation that there's one five hundred feet from you. Is that something that still is a nuisance when it's burning? Or is that something that's not too bad?
Well, thankfully, it only is used a few days, less than a week a year, right after rifle deer season. And so it kind of depends how the wind's blowing. And then I'm the recipient of some of his uh, smoking. So, you know, I guess it's just one of those things that I wouldn't appreciate it if it was all the time. But it's just a couple of days and we learn how to deal with it.
Gotcha. But it's still something that five hundred feet away, it still is something that you can. Can perceive in a way.
I mean, it, and it really depends on which way the wind's blowing and the weather that day.
Okay.
So I think fortunately, it probably, it's kind of like a westerly wind. But it's on a bit of an angle, so it doesn't, it, it's not coming right, right at me.
Well, I've done a lot of talking. I was wondering if any other board member has any thoughts on this?
So I was thinking, I mean, I'm still trying to grapple with this issue. And so I, i- in general, I. I'm, I'm possibly trying to find a way to allow people uh, cooking sort of food. Um, not allow just burning garbage or other things. Um.
Well, burning garbage is, is prohibited.
Right, right.
You can't burn garbage. That's already in place.
Right. Um, so, so it's basically allow people cooking foods. But not make it such that if there is some sort of like a smell or. Uh, some, you know, some, if there is a smell or, or, or smoke. That goes out to the neighbors and creates a persistent problem. Uh, for, you know, reasonable long period of time, that's possibly what I would like to prevent. And trying to create a rule which is crafted to give people maximum freedom. Where it's not causing nuisance to others is where I'm trying to still grapple with.
Also, off, all of these things are supposed to be attended, right? Just, so, but open burns and recreational fires at all times should be attended.
That's correct.
So if somebody has a barrel of burning something, burning overnight, and they are not there with it, that is not legal, correct?
What, once again, I think it's gonna depend on, you know, are there open flames? I mean, I, as I said, we have had people that have used their barrel for smoking, you know, for smoking meats. So as I said, I know, I know it gets a little confusing. Um, yes, if there's an open flame or something, yes, it should be attended. But I said, they could use it for smoldering, you know, I said, so there is no open flame. And that would be okay for smoking meats for it to be unattended.
Okay, well, I don't really think it's a good idea in a residential district to have a burn barrel. Burning overnight unattended, even if it's just smoldering. I mean, that certainly is a hazard. I mean, I don't leave a campfire unattended if it's smoldering. Everybody knows they can kick back up, right?
I would agree with you. And is that a direction that would make sense to? To look into, to, to try to regulate the smoke and odor nuisance. Because if it's continuing overnight, then it likely isn't attended. And if we're unable to regulate these things as a nuisance. Could you regulate it as unattended? Could we look at that definition?
Think so. It's concerning to me because it seems like the language is very clear that, you know, that this kind of thing would, would have to be attended. And yet there's all of these loopholes. Well, it's, it doesn't have to be attended if this, or if that, if you put a little grate over the top or something. It seems, it seems dangerous to me and it seems like it is confusing to regulate. Um.
And that's the, I mean, the other aspect of this is I can't go traipsing through somebody's backyard to essentially check it out. To see how it's constructed, to see if there's some type of plates that would actually prohibit the flame from coming up. I know a gentleman that pretty much made his own smoker out of a fifty-five gallon drum. And he has some sort of baffling system in it that the flame, you, you can't, if there are flames. They get extinguished pretty quick and essentially just sits and smolders. So I, I, I'm not sure what all the right answer is here.
And Chief, is that in a residential district?
No.
Okay, yeah, I'm really mostly focused on residential districts. If some kind of apparatus was like that in a residential district, I would be very concerned. Homemade baffling the flames kind of thing, very concerning. Um, yeah.
The, this has to have been addressed in other residential areas before, so.
Typically, typically Lisa, like in the State College Borough, all recreational fires, everything is banned in the residential districts. You're just not gonna have a fire. It's just not legal. People don't try to be so accommodating to all of the kinds of walks. They just say no fires and are done with it. I think that we're trying to accommodate for everybody, but you know, in a residential zoning district. There's no reason why somebody has to put up with twenty-four hours of smoke, you know, coming in their windows. And so, you know, we certainly could outlaw all recreational fires. In residential districts. But I don't wanna go that route because I know a lot of people really enjoy a small fire. But some people just are out of hand and don't, you know, don't acknowledge their neighbors' needs. And so that's why we're even talking about this.
So what about uh, like if we try to reaffirm something which is like an unattended fire? Which is beyond, you know, an hour or something. So whatever reasonable amount of time, if you want to do it for an evening, you're sitting out with, you know, beside it, it's fine. But any other uh, fire which is beyond a certain amount of time and it's maybe unattended, that, that's not legal.
I think what the chief was saying is that these, these fires that aren't producing flames aren't considered fires, oddly enough. Um, I consider anything burning a fire, but you, you know, the visible flame thing is apparently necessary in this definition. But I think if we change the definition to not have to be a visible flame, that it would be any combust, any material that was combusting. Or something like that, that would be possible.
Our, our, yeah, i- instead of fire, we use it in a different term or a collection of terms to cover. Uh, these cases that we want to prevent.
Although I think we, we have to be careful how we would word something like that, so we're not including cooking grills and things of that sort. Because there, there is combustion going on, but they're completely enclosed, so.
Right, but we are putting in the uh, uh, for over this amount of time and uh, totally unaccompanied.
And aren't, don't, cooking devices have to be, I mean, they have to be um, have a presence too, though. I mean, you, isn't it true that somebody has to be at a grill if they're using a grill in our regulations right now? Or is, no?
I don't think so. I don't think so. Uh, grills and outdoor cooking devices are, cannot be on combustible surfaces. So you can't grill on your deck or, you know, insert like, well, within certain limitations of a structure. But there's no, nothing in the property maintenance code under the section that pertains to open flame cooking devices. That says anything about, you know, that they be continuously intended. Just says, open flame cooking devices shall not be operated on combustible balconies or within ten feet of combustible construction.
So I, forgive me, I don't grill. So those of you that grill, is it typical that you just leave your grill unattended for periods of time?
Sure.
Yep.
Oh my.
Well, I mean, for example, if you're, if you're, you know, slow cooking something, or if you are um. You know, you're done and you put the lid on it and you're, then you know, the embers are still maybe red or still, you know, there's still, still charcoal in the grill. But it's covered, you know, the likelihood of, of ash or ember escaping and causing a fire is, is pretty minimal if, if anything. Uh, so you know, a savvy, somebody who's using it properly. May not necessarily have to stand at the ready next to the grill while the last of the charcoal extinguishes. But they can take precautions to ensure that it won't spread to a combustible surface.
My other neighbor has a more grill-like smoker and he'll smoke ribs for eight hours. So, you know, he's back and forth checking it, but he's not standing the whole time.
Gotcha. I guess, I guess for me really, this sounds like it's um, it's obviously is a battle of a person's right. To clean breathable air versus a person's right to cooking their meat outside or burning their sticks or whatever outside. And I think right now, the way things are written, it sounds like we always, always, always prioritize. One side of the rights and not the other. So I'm just looking to get a little more balance here. So can we have written into the language necessary attendance for recreational and open burn fires? And then that does not include the grills called outdoor cooking devices? Because right now. Because right now. There is no requirement for open smoldering burns to be attended.
I thi- I think at this point, we're not really deciding necessarily what to put into regulation, but what we want staff to take a look at.
Right.
We could, we, we could ask, you know, certainly ask that question and.
Great.
Look into it, yeah.
Great. And then Dave, the other question of can we regulate? Open burns by zoning district and can we include burn barrels? In, exclude burn barrels from recreational fires?
I, I think the answer to those questions is yes. I mean, I, I don't see why. There's not, there's no reason that you would not be enabled to regulate. Fires in a certain zoning district, which is another, or a certain classification of use or. Category of zoning district. So if you said that, you know, in zoning districts R1, R2, R3 and R4. You know, Ferguson Township will not permit the issuance of any open burn permits, be able to do that. And what you'd have to do a little more, or you have to give a little more consideration to is what's the meaning of that? Are there? Open burning permits? And if you look at the, um, you know, the list that Walt provided. There are a number of open burn permits that have been issued over the last two and a half years. In all of those residential zoning districts, R1, R4. I don't see R2 or R3, so maybe. Maybe those are just the only two, but multifamily, you know, R4 has, has a couple of, um, you know, one or two. Uh, burn, open burn permits issued year to year. So what are those, you know, premises? As I said, I, I wish I would have drilled a little more into those data. What are those permits being issued for? If we have that, if we're tracking it. At the code level, or if it's just a general open burn permit that's issued when requested. Are there applications for open burn permits that go beyond? You know, certainly not under the category of residential or recreational fire, but maybe something that the board is not concerned about or that are justifiable. So I guess the question is, how far do you want to go with the regulation? Not specifically can you? Cause I think you, you're enabled to be pretty broad. In how you restrict or regulate, uh, either the issuance of open burn permits or having recreational fires, um, things like that.
Well, the way things are defined now, I would just look at just. Open burns period because. If there's some kind of nuance, then we should have a different kind of definition that's not open burn perhaps. But if you wanted to drill down into that, I mean, that's, that's fine. I guess we could have that information, but. You know, it's either going to be a grill or a recreational fire or an open burn as far as I understand.
I, I think, uh, you know, your open burn permit would be, you know, for something that's different than a recreational fire because you wouldn't require to, to get that permit. So the question is, you know, what categories of open burning? Might the board want to exclude from residential zoning districts? Or is it just a blanket prohibition on all open burn permits? In residential zoning districts?
Well, I think blanket, but I'm not sure what categories you might be talking about.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I, I don't know. And that's, that's what I, that's, that's my only point is just. Um, depending on how far you go with these regulations, you just want to know what the implications are. On, on that type of activity. So if you're saying. No, no open burn permits in residential zoning districts, what does that mean?
Right, I, right. I guess, I'm not, I guess, I'm not really concerned that it's going to be too restrictive, honestly. I mean, like I said, State College Borough allows not even recreational fires. I think we are already allowing recreational fires everywhere. The idea of not allowing open burn seems completely reasonable to me. Um, but. Yeah, I guess if you came back to us and said, oh no, this one person couldn't. I don't know, make their insulin on their open burn or something like that, I guess, but I just can't imagine what it would be.
I would suspect some of them would be construction sites.
You know, and. You know, large brush. Deposits that, you know, maybe are controlled burns or things, things like that. I mean, I don't, I don't really know what categories would, would fall under. Requiring a permit that may be appropriate in residential zoning districts, but.
And I guess I'll just again say the borough also does construction and has brush and they manage to not allow open burns. In residential areas and they still can make houses and maintain properties, so. I don't think it would be a barrier for us. And then also Dave Modricar mentioned about, can we get some language specifically prohibiting leaf burning?
Yeah, I think if, if we opened the ordinance up, as I said, I'm, I'm very confident in our ability to defend the, that. Provision that is on that grant application right now as it stands. If we are opening the ordinance up, then, you know, it, we could certainly add a specific exclusion. You know, that reflects that if that's what it takes to get DEP's level of comfort to where it needs to be, but I don't. I don't necessarily share that concern that we, um, don't have the ability to enforce. Prohibitions on leaf burning with the way our ordinance is currently written.
Well, I personally am interested in opening up, uh, based on the points that we talked about tonight and so. If the rest of the board is supportive of that, that'd be great. And I would say we might as well add in the leaf burning prohibition if we're going to do that, like you said.
Yeah, I think, uh, if we could just, you know, get to answers to the questions we raised tonight and then. Put it back on the agenda for. Discussion after that. I think we could go ahead and close this for tonight and.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, Dave?
Um. Yes, I, I think I've got a little clarity on, on homework to do.
Okay.
I'll work on doing maybe a little more research, uh, to that end.
Alright. So then we'll move on to the, uh, CADA fiscal year 2021, 2022 and. 2023, 2024 capital local match plan.
Thank you. Yeah, I think there's a year that's missing in there. It's a, to be a three-year. Plan, but, um, at the last meeting of the general forum, there was a motion that referred. The fiscal year 2021, 22, since they operated June to July fiscal year. Uh, through the 2023, 2024, I put and in, in the intro there, but it really should be through 20.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Local local match plan. Apologies for that, uh, for this area transportation authority to participating municipalities for approval. This is a requirement of the federal assistance, uh, that CADA receives that for them to have access to that funding as well as funding through PennDOT. Um, that they have this, um, commitment of, of local matching dollars. So. Uh, several years ago, CADA began this process for a multi-year local match plan for their capital plan. And what you see with your agenda this evening, which was provided, uh, to the general forum. Is that, uh, upcoming local match plan since it's expiring at the, um, midway point through 2021. This would, uh, expand this for another three, uh, years. And it's showing no increase in annual totals and it helps to maintain that fund balance. That's consistent with what CADA has carried from year to year. So recommendation, um, is that the board, uh, approve the local match plan for fiscal years 2021, 22 through 2023, 2024.
And these are pretty much defined by the requirements for match by the federal and state. So. So is there any questions or comments? If not. We have a motion.
I'll move that the Board of Supervisors approve the Center Area Transportation Authority Capital Local Match Plan for Fiscal Years 2021, 2022 through 2023, 2024.
Just a second.
Okay, motion second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have staff and committee reports, executive committee. I think everything was covered at the cog meeting. I'll tell Laura right now, I don't need you to cover the executive committee this month. Cause my surgery's been scheduled to October now, so.
Oh, good. I can still be sick and hilarious then.
But I do need Lisa to cover the finance committee because the oral surgery that's postponed is going to occur that day, so. So. And then we have Transportation and Land Use Committee.
Okay, we met today. Um, we had a, a long meeting for us. We went through a lot of stuff. We started with a discussion on the cog committee structure review, which all the committees will go through. And, um, we just looked at what the staff recommendations were so far, kind of a, a big picture look at. Different levels of adjustments that can be made. And what we talked about today was, um. Mostly some of what they call the low hanging fruit, some of the easy changes and that. Mostly, uh, centered on just getting the committees, um, consistent as far as agendas and minute taking, um. Things like that. So we, we were supportive of taking an overall look at. The, um, the work of the committees in general, which is a later, a later step in the review process. So to just minimize overlap and. Make sure everyone's being as efficient as they can be, particularly if we add, uh, climate action and. Ad hoc facilities to, um, some different things, so. Talked about that. Um, and then the next, uh, discussion we had was. On planning related responses to the pandemic and potential impacts moving forward. It was a really good discussion, um, that Jim May led and it was. Basically about, um, what are the impacts so far, uh, on planning and what do we? Estimate maybe the long-term impacts, um, of the pandemic on the built environment and, um. Needs of people in the center region as time goes on. So. We went through a series of questions about this. We discussed things that different municipalities have done so far, like the, um. The, uh, ordinance that Jenna had, um, brought to us to give some temporary. Relief to some businesses in different ways, using parking, uh. Requirements and so forth. Uh, we talked about maybe, um, an additional thing townships could do would be to waive whatever permit fees. Um, might come up just to make things a little bit, um, less burdensome for these, uh, businesses that are trying to, um, keep things going. So. Another thing we talked about was, um. What are some changes that have been made that may be suited to permanent change? So. Maybe reducing parking requirements in different areas, maybe keeping some, um, outdoor seating in certain places, uh. One thing that, um, Jim May brought up was looking at how people are. Going about their daily lives right now, in particular shopping. So looking at, um, online ordering. So if you're looking at Walmart, they might be becoming more of a. Warehouse or fulfillment. Uh. Building. So instead of so much of a store. So how does the township's zoning look at a warehouse? As opposed to a store? So that might be something that some municipalities would need to look at as time moves forward if. Things like online ordering continue to be as popular as they are right now. So, and I, I can't remember off the top of my head how we have, um. Warehouses and that kind of thing. Zoned and I didn't look it up in between that meeting and this one, so I don't know, but just something to think about. He even said, you know, look at, um. Drones delivering things. So if the FedEx truck parks in one area and then sends drones to the houses in a neighborhood. Are we regulating those, um, the airspace and the rights to that? Are we assigning some kind of fee to using? The air around there. So just, you know, just some bigger picture thinking, uh, that. Might be useful. Um, anyways, then we went on to discuss how, um. To. Uh, maintain equitable community engagement. Um, and one thing we kind of zeroed in on is internet accessibility to, uh, you know, region wide. So. Um, and this would be to even cog staff working from home, you know, our municipal staff working from home. So. Not everybody is right in the borough or right by a, a cell tower to get, you know, really reliable access. Somebody got dropped. On our meeting today when we were discussing this, so, um, and I know it happens to me frequently. So. We, we asked that, um, Jim forward a request to public services to look at, to look into it and to see. Uh, what the county is doing. I know the county commissioners have been really interested in internet access broadband. So to see what, what activity is happening there and maybe there's some. Potential, uh, resources out there for, um, for cog to tap into. Knowing what an increased need people have for this right now. Um. One more thing I wanted to highlight that we talked about was, um, just the, we talked about the long-term fiscal impacts on the different municipalities and, um. And how TLU committee can kind of, um, pay attention and, uh, and address some of these needs since. This committee talks about affordable housing and we do a lot of, um, reviews on this or studies being done, like I mentioned before at CRPA. It seems like TLU would be a good committee to monitor. Housing security, housing needs and assistance that's being requested at the county level. They have some. Programs there and the borough also has, uh. Rent assistance programs. So for, for the planning agency to keep tabs on what. Those needs are, how they're growing, what the rate is, what the, um, amounts are so that we have a sense of. How those needs are growing and hopefully leveling off and then reducing over time. And if not, how? Can we address this? So, um, and we talked very briefly also about food security. We can, I don't know of a different committee that would be, um. Really suited to look at those kinds of things. But when I had asked Dave before, you know, to look at. The food bank and see how they're doing, it seems like that would be a good regional activity if we're talking about. Housing security issues to, um, to look at that and not to create some other kind of social service agency, but to be aware of the problem because we're. We're in that role, so. So that was that, that was about it. Um, we'll meet next on September 14th and there was a mention of the census, I know, um. I think Sintrees talked about that earlier, just about the need to really highlight, uh, the fact that that is still occurring and needing people to complete that. And that was it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, are there any other committee reports? See any on the agenda? Okay, then we'll go to the manager's report.
Thank you. Um, my report's in your packet, um, on the. Some bad news side of things. We were denied our application for PennDOT multimodal transportation funding. For the Pine Grove Mill Streetscape improvements. So got a letter of denial last week. Uh, there, so. Probably something that the board's going to be asked to revisit whether you still want to pursue those improvements or whether you want to wait for another grant opportunity, maybe to present itself. Initially, you may recall, we were hoping that we could chase down transportation alternative program funding for the project, but that was not announced as we expected it to be. Um, I guess late last year. So the multimodal fund was our only option and, um, and we were unsuccessful with that application. I talked about the business needs survey. There's a letter that's with my report. Um, from the county commissioners that, um. Talks about their intention to consider an ordinance to approve the commercial property assessed clean energy legisla- uh, program. On July 28th, that meeting was held and it was approved. So there is a C-PACE program that's now in force in the county. Uh, we'll work on getting some, um. Informational material out, uh, through our media, uh, to promote that. What it allows is for commercial property owners. uh, within the county to leverage the program for, uh, a loan to invest back in their business for green improvements, installation of renewable energy sources, um, distributed best management practices for stormwater management and et cetera. So any kind of green scale improvement. And then that loan continues even through, uh, sale of that property. It's tied to the commercial property itself. So subsequent property owners will buy it with that lien essentially on the property that they'll have to, uh, continue to pay back and resolve. The hope is that it enables some financial options for commercial property owners to invest in green infrastructure in their properties. Um, there's a letter from Chairman, uh, Jesse Varlow, the State College Borough Council just submitted in response to the board's letter, uh, regarding the use of the OW House property. Um, we had the organizational meeting in the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Board that was held on July 27th. Uh, there's some information on the officers that were selected to lead that group. That's in my report. I'm going to be distributing a poll tomorrow morning to hopefully settle on a time and day of the month that the group is able to meet. And then had a meeting of the, of non-uniform pension advisory committee last week as well to talk about the responses that were received to the request proposals for pension, non-uniform pension sponsorship services. Currently, we are with ICMA RC for the Townships 457 Deferred Compensation Plan and 401 Pension Plans. So, um, we heard, we had eight responses to the RFP, including ICMA RC, our current provider. We had good response rate. All of them are, uh, at a cost of about half what we're paying now for those services. So there's, uh, anticipated good outcome on that. Uh, next step for the advisory committee is going to be to conduct interviews with some of the finalists that were selected from those eight responses. And then hopefully come up with a recommendation to proceed. So the board can expect an agenda item. Hopefully, I'm in September, more likely maybe the second meeting in September, first meeting October. Uh, where we begin to discuss the process for that and ask for the board's approval to either engage, re-engage with ICMA RC or engage with one of the other firms if they're the finalists. And then finally, um, my vacation begins, uh, this Saturday. So I'll be appointing sentries Martin, the assistant to the manager to serve as acting township manager in my absence. But, uh, I can be reached by cellphone if absolutely necessary. That concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Any questions for Dave?
Uh, it's Laura. I just want to make a comment. I was really pleased to see that the borough has let Penn State know that after the renewal of this permit that's already allowed, um, that they're not going to be allowing it to be used for a lay down yard any longer. I thought that was really, really a wonderful, wonderful response. So thank you to the borough. And Dave, enjoy your vacation.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have the Public Works Director's report. Thanks Steve. I'll touch on a few items. This week, road crew is predominantly doing brush and leaf collection. We finished paving the paths in Tudak Park. Next week, after brush and leaf collection are done, they'll be back in Tudak Park and they will be backing up the pavement with topsoil needs to be some topsoil placed along the edges and seeded. Tree Commission meets August 17th, 5:30 via Zoom, continued discussion on the tree preservation ordinance and the heritage ordinance. Work continues at the Public Works Building. I'm working on, um, trying to get the electric supply for the maglock to one of the doors completed in the lobby. A few repairs and working on an HVAC and humidity issue that we're kind of working through in the, in the admin building. Final meeting of the Stormwater Advisory Committee took place last week, July 29th. The consultant will provide a um, final report. So I expect that'll be presented to the board at your next regular meeting on August 17th. And I think that touched on the major items. Thank you. Any questions for Dave? I should note that the signal at Bristol and Blue Course is in flash, which means in the next day or two, you'll probably see it go into its normal cycle. And then we have the Planning and Zoning Director's report.
Uh, so planning commission met July 27th. They reviewed the final land development plan for this would lap 19 along with the draft affordable housing ordinance. Internal staff is working on, um, final, final draft with recommendations from property owners that are within those districts that this would affect. Um, before we provide another draft, that was recommendation from planning commission to review those provided comments. Um, we see the big stuff that we have. There'll be another zone hearing board meeting August 25th for a setback variance. And that's pretty much it. Just going through new pack and then reviewing the cottages amendments.
Hey, thank you. Any questions for Jenna? Okay, are there any communications to the board?
So, yeah, I received, uh, a happy, uh, email from a, a citizen who was happy that the light was coming up on Bristol and Blue Course because he had been frustrated waiting there for five minutes or whatever, long time to take a left and things like that. So, so they, he thanked us.
Okay. Anything else? In that case, I would take your motion to adjourn.
So moved. It's Laura. Good night. Night.
All right.